On the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely, remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 84509560758. Hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West 4th Street, Madera, California, 93637. It is now six o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protemejia.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes. Councilmember Evans is absent. Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Representative for Ana, Senator Ana Calagato, Ms. Joyce Dale?
Thank you. Everyone, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come together this evening, Lord, at this meeting here of Madera City Council. We ask, Lord, that you be in the midst, that you be with us for every decision that is made, all of the conversations that are had. Bless everyone that we're recognizing this evening, Lord. We ask these things in your Son, Jesus, Holy Name, amen.
Amen. Would you please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Congressman John Duarte's, Representative Joshua Babcock?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you, Joshua, for that. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I ask my colleagues if there are additions or changes to the agenda. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilwoman Gallegos. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
No roll calls needed. No roll calls needed.
Excuse me? Well, we have a...
He's absent.
He's absent. We just have her down as absent, and we just do it, okay? All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We will now move on to public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and nor do its conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment will please observe the three-minute limitations. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to make a public comment at this time? If so, please step up to the podium.
Alrighty, today, I'm gonna... I wrote a script. I'm not usually writing scripts, so bear with me. I'm usually a free speaker, but I'm gonna read for my script. First, I'd like to express my gratitude to Police Chief Dino Lawson as he embarks on his retirement, acknowledging his extremely service. The prospects of being under the capable leadership of our incoming Police Chief Gino Chiamonte pending the council approval brings me great satisfaction. We are fortunate to have such a qualified candidate within our ranks and not have to look elsewhere. Second, I'm addressing Mayor Santos Garcia. I want to bring to your attention the deteriorating state of our city under your administration. The recent loss of a two-hundred apartment complex project, apartment complex projects in Madera is deeply concerning. After nearly a year's effort and a personal investment of over one-hundred thousand, the abrupt departure of the building following discussions with the city indicated a troubling situation. Mostly, this was timeframe, response back, and changes that weren't need to be done going back and forth. Madera appears to have an unfavorable business environment characterized by delayed responses to inquiries and emails. Seeking permits in Madera is known to involve a waiting period of ninety days for response with minimal follow-up. In stark contrast to my experience in Kermit, where prompt communications led the same day approval, examining a timeframe processing each piece of paperwork submitted by the city would greatly improve efficiency. In my project case, a significant delay was caused by an outsourced individual who had possession of the paperwork for sixty days. Only when it escalated the matter to the city manager did the issue receive immediate attention and resolution. Mayor, despite your decision to outsource tasks to expedite process, the reality is there has been no seeable improvement. For instance, the big large store remains unopened as adult daycare facilities. These establishments will provide approximately eighty jobs for the community. I want you to take a proactive measure, engage with landlords, to understand and overcome the obstacles hindering their operations. Other cities collaborate efficiently, while Madera seems to fall short. Your petition and petition and confidence aimed at promoting Madera and constant communication with the governor on pressing matters like a hospital situation are credible expectations for a mayor. However, I notice a lack of updates or actions regarding these issues. Is this highlighting that even those who supported your elections are voicing concerns about your performance? The people in Madera entrusted you with the responsibility of leading our city. Now overseeing is its decline. It is my hope that you take these concerns seriously and work towards improving Madera's future. And also, I'd like to leave my phone number, 559-246-0000, Kirkotamia. If anybody has issues in Madera, I will do what I can to help you out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comments? Please step up to the podium.
Hi, my name's Raul Ramirez. And on June the thirtieth of a couple months ago, I was assaulted by a person that was working for three corporate bodies or businesses. And I was assaulted six times. I called the sheriff. He went down there. He never had me point the guy out. He never went and had him to see if he was loaded on drugs or what. And I'm very upset about that. So I already went, and he never sent in the report over to the DA where he's supposed to send it. And I had to... Well, I sent him a statement of facts to his place. And I'm very upset that the police never went up there, checked him for drugs or anything. He assaulted me, and I don't like that. Having said that, I would like to say, you know, America's on the wrong foot. America has created an image of a false god. It has created and made a law to it, and now America's in trouble, okay? Just like things that happened to me, these guys, the officer not having done his part of the law to fulfill what I was dishonored in my rights. So America has created this image of a false god, created a law into it. And what I think is gonna happen is that the Lord, who is the real Lord, is gonna come down, and he's gonna judge America. Having said that, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Anyone wishing to step up to the mic?
Good afternoon, members of Madera City Board. Es un placer para Latinos Madera Club agradecer al Departamento de Policía de Madera por el apoyo ofrecido en la clase de comunidades seguras donde el oficial Félix González se dirigió a la comunidad en el lenguaje de español y nos resaltó la importancia de fortalecer la comunicación en la comunidad y la policía para lograr la seguridad de Madera. Muchas gracias.
Hi, good afternoon. It's a pleasure for the Latino Madera Club to give a thanks to the Madera Police Department for the support to the safety, to the support to the safety, community and safety. When Officer Felix González talked to us in Spanish, and he showed us the important relationship between the community and the police department to have established in Madera City. Thank you very much.
So we have a thankful to Chief Dino Lawson for your service, dedication, and support to the community of Madera, California, from the Latinos Madera Group. This is for you.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, please.
Oh, give me a hug. All of them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under public comment, is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing none? Alicia, do we have any Zoom? Oh, yes. I think we have you in a little bit. This is for the proclamation certificate, yes. Oh, okay, absolutely, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Gilbert Felix, District Director for Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria. Good to see all of you. First off, I want to say thank you to the city for all of your support. It feels like a lifetime ago now, but two weeks ago, we had a really fantastic backpack giveaway at Courthouse Park. A lot of support from the city, so the Assemblywoman's very appreciative. We ended up giving over seven hundred backpacks away to schoolchildren here in Madera, so thank you for that. But I am here on some more important business. What I wanted to do was read a letter from Assemblywoman Soria to the council and to the city and for the record regarding the Madera Community Hospital. Our office has received many, many letters of support from community members here in Madera, urging the Assemblywoman to support the reopening of the Madera Community Hospital, and that's been her number-one priority since elected in November of last year. So let me go ahead and read this, this letter. Dear community... Well, this letter, we're sending it to all the folks who've been writing to us, so apologize. Dear community member, thank you for the letter of support for the Madera Community Hospital's application for the distressed hospital loan program administered by the California Department of Healthcare Access and Information. This loan application is a first step towards eventually reopening the Madera Community Hospital so that we can reestablish healthcare access in Madera and its surrounding communities. Reopening the Madera Community Hospital is my top priority for the constituents of the twenty-seventh Assembly District. That is why, within my first one-hundred-and-fifty days of office, I worked to secure one-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to create the distressed hospital loan program through my legislation, AB four twelve. This loan program was designed to assist distressed hospitals, such as Madera Community Hospital, access critical funding necessary to keep their doors open or reopen their doors. The legislature recognized the extraordinary need for this loan program, and we eventually passed AB one twelve, which allocated three-hundred million dollars for the distressed hospital loan program. I'm thrilled that the Madera Community Hospital is taking advantage of the unprecedented funding I was able to secure for distressed hospitals. I strongly support the application and eagerly await a decision from the Department of Healthcare Access and Information regarding the Madera Community Hospital's eighty-million-dollar loan application. Additionally, I applaud Adventist Health for extending a letter of intent to enter into a management agreement with the Madera Community Hospital. I understand the importance of access to quality, affordable healthcare, especially in our rural Central Valley. Our community should be encouraged by the swift action of our local and state governments working collaboratively to find a path forward for the hospital. I thank you for your letter of support on this matter and look forward to working with each of you to ensure the future success of the Madera Community Hospital. And as always, our office is available to answer questions, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Gilbert. Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Yes, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Council and residents of Madera, California. My name is Abraham Arias. This is the very first, you know, council meeting that I've attended. The reason that I'm here is because, you know, I live on Roberts Avenue, and I'm not sure if any of you are aware of this particular avenue. Folks tend to speed. It's a residential area, and I've been living here for the last year or so. Speed limit is twenty-five, you know, morning all the way to the evening. Folks are just speeding through thirty-five, forty miles per hour. I've called it in multiple times. I've spoken with... I don't believe the chief, but I believe his assistant, among other people. I was told that the main thing that I can do is call the police so that there's a presence because there are no speed bombs, any of that sort of thing allowed in Madera, California, which, you know, I guess is understandable. We don't get anybody hurt, but my problem is that I have kids. Again, I live in a residential area. I don't particularly let my kids play outside in their scooters or anything like that, because, like I said, people are just going, just driving by real crazy. Recently, our neighbors, we placed a bunch of signs to slow down, but folks don't really tend to respect that. And so really, the reason I'm here is I'm asking you if there's something that we can implement, not just in this particular avenue, but just in Madera, California. I get it, people are gonna speed. There's only so much that officers can do, totally understandable. But if maybe this particular road, this particular avenue, and other avenues can be looked into, and if we can, I don't know, either more police presence. I do recall a couple of times, police went out there. They didn't do a whole lot. They kind of like parked at the end of the avenues. At that point, people were slowing down. I remember I saw this officer. I told him that he could park in my driveway this way. I mean, you know, people can actually like, you know, feel that presence, but not a whole lot's been done, and I've been really just procrastinating coming here. And finally, here I am, voicing out what's going on, and I'm hoping that you folks can do something. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there any other public comment? Anyone wishing to come up to the podium and speak under public comment? Alicia, do we have any public comment in written form or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now close public comment, and we go on to presentations. Joe, can you join me, please? So we are going to present a proclamation. This is National Senior Citizens Day. Whereas, this is on behalf of the city council, whereas National Senior Citizens Day honors our elderly population for the value and contributions they bring to our home, family, and society as a whole. And whereas the city of Madera has a growing number of senior citizens who contribute their time, wisdom, experience to our community. And whereas the city recognizes the need to create a community that offers services and support that older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas the city council wishes to express its appreciation for past and continuing contributions of its senior residents to the community and to our nation, and recognize that older adults are a vital and growing part of our city. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three as National Senior Citizens Day. Signed this day, August two thousand twenty-three. And I'll present Joe with this so that he can introduce his colleagues.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Council, guests. When the mayor asked me to stand up here, I think he realized the calendar. I just crossed over to the senior side, so... So that's why he asked me to come up here. So I'm recognizing all my peeps tonight. So with that said, I just want to bring up Olga Garcia Sosito to come in. Just, he's our senior coordinator, and all the folks, yeah, might have some folks who want to come say, say something tonight.
Do I just want to say a few words?
Of course I would.
Of course I do. Put a microphone in front of me. I'll take a chance. No, I just want to thank the city council. So this year, a group of ladies, we do regular exercise, and when our exercise place is closed down, we have to find other venues. And you guys have a hidden secret with what you're doing with the seniors as far as fitness goes. So we participated in the water aquatics. So my friend Sharon here, we had an absolute delightful time. The instructors were great. We've been over to Pan Am and done yoga and Tai Chi and found out you have karaoke over there and free breakfast in the morning. So, you know, we've, we've just really want to encourage the council to continue to do things for the seniors. The only thing I know, one thing we said, you need to charge more than a dollar for the pool. A dollar. That's what it costs, a dollar. So I just want to commend the city council and Parks and Rec for doing a lot for our seniors, and we need to get the word out there more. Sharon?
That's it? I'm not a senior. I'm just with her.
Everybody can introduce themselves. Say your name.
My name is Sharon Row.
Yeah.
And we have some staff here today.
Hi, I'm Marcela Zamolpa.
I'm Monica Estrada.
And I am Olga Sosito Garcia that gets the privilege of overseeing senior services. And I'm telling you, we're redefining what seniors look and sound like, and we're really into wellness and fitness, so we welcome everybody who's fifty-five and older to join us. Thank you so much.
Did you know what? Yeah, excuse me. Could you get him up here? Just bring him up here. Come on up. We'll take a picture up at the dais.
Everyone, look over here. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
And the price is now fifty dollars each.
The star is who has it, Joe?
Yeah.
You're the lady. Boy, those seniors.
Ciao.
Party time. I can imagine what's gonna go on now.
By the way, I want to thank Alicia, our city clerk, because she makes all of this happen all the time, and she does a wonderful job. We do a lot of these, and she does a very wonderful job making this happen. Chief Dino Lawson, alias Frank Sinatra. Come up here, please. Oh, you've never heard him sing? Oh, man, he's a crooner. He's a crooner. You want to try a bit, a little bit? This is a very long one, so I'm not gonna read it all. We all know and love our chief. He's a great guy. Everybody knows that. But this is from my colleagues on the city council. Recognize you and your awesomeness, and we wish you the best in your future endeavor. And we thank you for all the service that you did here for our community. And you're gonna continue to do for our community, because we know the person that you are. And so we just want to say, we want to make this proclamation in honor of you, of all the years of service, how you've mentored other folks and brought along a wonderful staff, a wonderful staff to our community. They're gonna live here and work here long after you're gone, and it's a testament to you and your dedication to our city. So this proclamation, chief, is for you. Not done. This is from Commander Chiamonte. He wants to say a couple of words, make a presentation also.
Yes, as most of you know, I've been with, with chief for twenty-two years of my career. And, you know, the mayor talks about dedication and loyalty, and not just twenty-eight years that he's provided the service. you know, the mayor talks about dedication and loyalty and, and not just twenty-eight years that he's provided the service to the citizens of the city of Madera, but thirty-seven years to the county of Madera. And so he's dedicated his adult life to this community, and I know the relationships built will forever last. Um, one of the first things I want to do is recognize his wife, Melissa. You know, without a strong foundation at home, whether it's being a beat officer, uh, but the last seven years being a chief of police, I know the phone calls are twenty-four seven, um, just as much as being on duty full time. And, and your support system throughout this is extremely important, and I know he talks weekly about your long walks and how you get them through many things. So we appreciate your, your service too to the city of Madera. Thank you. And I also want to introduce another uh family member, his daughter Sarah. She also came, uh, you, you know, being a family member of a police officer isn't easy. And it, it truly is a young person's uh, uh, job role, um, especially when you're working the streets. And being able to do twenty-eight years of service uh should provide quite a bit of hope uh to all of our young officers that the career doesn't end early on as many people think. They think when they get through the, the patrol side of things, that it starts to slow down. It doesn't, and the testament to what Dino has done to continue to build those relationships. We talk about the police department being family, and the strongest strength Dino has is his ability to mentor young men and women, and we bring them on at around twenty-one to twenty-three. And they have so many years within their life to grow within the department. And his mentorship, I am one of those that I, he's like a father figure, took me under his wing, and I was able to kind of be his Danielson. So I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you for everything. There'll be many more talks we talk about, but I appreciate everything you've done for me and this community. Thank you.
Speech.
Yeah, saying.
Speech, speech.
Well, we're not done yet. We're not done yet. We're not done yet. Uh, next up, we have a um uh certificate on behalf of Senator Ana Caballero's office. And we have with us her staff member, Joyce Dale. Joyce, would you come up here, please?
Um, it is my pleasure to um to come, really not my pleasure to say that you're leaving, that you're retiring. Chief um Lawson has been the main one from the first time I came to Madera to welcome me here. I knew nothing about Madera. And the first time I came for an event, you welcomed me and was happy to see me ever since. So it's my pleasure, as I read more information about you, to give this to the retirement of the longest-serving Madera city employee ever. Was that right? I got that from somewhere. Longest serving ever. Okay, an appreciation of your dedication to the city of Madera, you are proof that the community and law enforcement can engage in a cooperative relationship with endless possibilities. Congratulations on your retirement.
Next up, we have a certificate on behalf of Congressman Duarte, John Duarte's office. And, and tonight presenting the certificate is staff member Josh Bangkok.
Thank you very much, and it's an honor to be here tonight representing Congressman John Duarte. When I first started this job, Chief Lawson was my very first law enforcement meeting, and it was phenomenal to be able to engage with him. You've served this city for twenty-eight years and even longer for the county. Thank you so much for the dedication and commitment you have, and thank you to your family as well.
Thank you again.
Okay, Gilbert, if you could come up here. Um, this certificate is on behalf of Assemblywoman Zmeral de Soria, her, from her office. And I'm introducing to you staff member Gilbert Felix.
So Gilbert Felix again with Assemblywoman Zmeral de Soria. I want to echo the words of, of Joyce. No one wants to say goodbye, but, you know, let me go ahead and read this certificate. Uh, on behalf of the California State Assembly, thank you for your dedicated leadership. As Chief of Police for the City of Madera Police Department since two thousand eighteen, we commend your thirty-seven years of law enforcement and public safety service, including twenty-eight years with the city of Madera. Our communities across the Central Valley are safer and stronger because of your community-oriented and inclusive policing style that has strengthened relationships and built trust among the people you serve and lead. Congratulations on a successful tenure as the Madera Police Chief, and best wishes on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your service and loyalty to the Madera community.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Chief, don't go anywhere. We're almost done. Hang in there, brother, hang in there. Um, I know that my colleagues would like to say probably a couple of words uh before we go and take a picture. So Councilwoman Gallegos, would you like to start off?
Wow, um, there are no words. I'm going to try not to get emotional. Uh, I've been in the city council the longest, not by age, I say all the time, just by years. And when I got on the city council, chief was the commander. And again, like Joyce has said, he was the first one that I kind of gotten to know close enough as an elected official. The commander was very kind to show me around, bring me around the police department, introduced me to the officers. Um, I was gung ho and, and learning all the departments, but this department kind of got close to my heart because I got that one-on-one with chief, and he made me part of the family that they do have there at PD. Uh, it's hard to fit in those shoes. Um, he's done an awesome job. You can ask anybody out there in the city of Madera, he is so well-rounded, well-versed, and just gives you that one-on-one that you feel like you're the only one in the world he's talking to, and it could be a room full of people. And you feel like, oh, my gosh, he's, he's, he has the time, he's giving me the time. He's actually listening to what I have to say, and he takes it back and he follows through. And um that's really hard to find in a person. His character is just outstanding. Um, I could go on and on and on, but I have to share the floor. I, I can't be here forever. You guys have things to do and we have work to do, but um Chief, uh, I will, you'll be truly missed um from the bottom of my heart, not just only from me, from my family who feels very close to you. So thank you.
Yeah, Chief, I want to say thank you. Um, so we work together, not just on council, I work for the city of, of Madera. And you were very responsive, helping us out, and when we were being, people were being mean to us in code enforcement, like, hey, come help us out, Chief. Clearing houses and things like that. But even when I got off, not as a council member, as just a community member, asking for your assistance on stuff, you actually came out to the community and spoke to the community, and it was very sincere and genuine, and ever, everyone felt that. And you carried that through from working with you, uh, you know, as a colleague, um, not, not as, not in police, but, you know, and as a community member and as a council member. Um, so we really do appreciate all the service that you've given to this community, and the community appreciates that. You know, happy for you, sad to see you go, um, and, you know, nothing but uh good thoughts and happy things for you and your future endeavors. Thank you.
Chief, um, thank you for twenty-eight years. Thank you to your family as well. Uh, I am one of those that held you up on your way to your dinner at one point. Um, but I know that um residents are very grateful for your service and most of all, your professionalism. I know that you just always made every, every effort to get our questions, questions answered and just really serve the city of Madera, and congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I kind of want to echo what Commander Chiamonte had said. That not only a stand-up guy, genuine, I want to echo the, where the foundation really starts, and that's at home, the support that you have. Uh, you certainly build a rapport with a lot of the residents here and business owners, and I think that says a lot about you. It's hard for me as a council member to build a relationship with the chief, but it's, it's overwhelmingly accepted by the residents, so that it, it just, you have to accept that because that's exactly what our community needs, and thank you so much for everything you've done, for just being available for all of our communities within our city of Madera and being, making yourself available. So thank you so much for the years. You will be missed, and I hope that I can call you, uh, hopefully someday, have some coffee, so thank you.
Dino, uh, you're special, you, you, you're unique. Everybody loves you. And you're going to be remembered for a long time, for many generations. And I always say, uh, I didn't know you before. I know you when I give to council, and I was here in Madera. I don't know why that, that happened, not supposed to happen, but anyway, you, you're special. And thank you for all these years you, you give to the city of Madera. Thank you.
Take another picture.
Three, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. I was waiting for a speech.
You know, was, was it too hot in here?
It was a little warm.
A little warm. She wanted to get some chips. Yeah, that's an inside. Sense of humor. That's the one thing about our council. You know, they come, they, they, they would like to say everything that they said about me, but it starts over here, it starts up here. Um, they set the tone. Um, they're the ones that guide the department heads. That run, that run the departments in the city and how they want it done. Um, so I, I feel blessed that they, they've given these accolades to me, but it starts here. Great support, uh, please continue to support the people. You always have, I know you will continue to do it, but it starts up here. It's, it's with great leadership. With it, the other thing is, I, I had said earlier, um, that, uh, Hernaldo. Well, I met him, well, our first time I met him, we had a two-hour conversation. I didn't think anyone could talk more than me, but I met my match. Uh, a great guy, but, but I met him and I said, you know what? It, it, it's just like a marriage, you're my last city manager. I like you, you're a great boss, I'm going to give you everything I have, but when I'm done, we're done, that's it. I can't do another one, you're my last one. And he chuckled at me and he laughed, and I just want to say I kept my word. You're the only one, I couldn't do another city manager. And so I appreciate the support and everything that you've done. Uh, I do want to say one thing, um, you have a great police department. Your officers are outstanding. Um, they're some of the best around, and that's because that anytime that I had ever asked for anything budget-wise, you gave it. Training, equipment, whatever it is, you, you always gave that, and we've hired and, and retained some of the best people. Um, you look at our detective units, they'll, they'll be a major crime, a homicide or something, they're solving it in twenty-four hours, that's unheard of. You just have great people that, that for twenty-eight years made me look good. Um, and, and I love them and I, I, I will miss them. But, but it's one of those things that you know you're leaving it in good hands, and it's going to be better when I go than, than it is right now, because you've got outstanding people that are full of energy and ready to take it to the next level. The, the, the citizens of this community, um, thirty-seven years, and yes, I built relationships over those thirty-seven years, they're friends. I, I don't look at them as I, I'm serving and doing a role or a duty, they're friends to me. And that's what we always tried to impart, that you got to build friendships, because that's what makes things special. Um, even, even to council meetings, Papa, Papa Chua back there. Every meeting, we, we entertain each other and keep each other going, but it's those relationships. And then he always tells me about things that the PD isn't doing right and we need to fix, but that's how it works. So I want to thank you. Um, most of all, it was said earlier by the commander, but I, I couldn't have done this for thirty-seven years if it wasn't for my wonderful wife. I swear I wasn't going to do this. But for thirty-two of the thirty-seven years, that, that, that lady paid the price. Um, she allowed me to do everything that I was able to do in this community because she took care of the family. She was at all the teacher conferences, uh, birthdays, holidays, she took care of everything so I could be at work and do what I did, so I owe you a huge thank you. Love you to death, you're great. My daughter, my grandson, love you guys. Uh, my two other sons that aren't here either, I love them, uh, and my other daughter, she's not here, but it, it is a, a happy but sad time, and I want to thank everybody for putting up with me. And, and continue to do what you're doing. And also, if I can, one last time, one of the main people that kept me going on this path and, and anytime I needed help or wasn't quite sure about a decision or the legalities or something. And, and I kind of say, my mentor, um, is Wendy Silva. Greatest, greatest person there is. Whenever I needed something, she was always there, she always covered my back when I made mistakes, made me look good. I love her. Thank you, Wendy. Um, carry it on, and I know you don't get it thanked enough, um, but you are the rock of this organization. Thank you very much.
Absolutely wonderful. That was great. As we continue on, there are no introductions tonight. Item A is workshops. Item A1 is informational workshop regarding the city of Madera budget, capital improvement program, CIP, and master fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, report by Mike Lima. Thank you very much. Think after three-minute clock, okay? Think after three minute clock. Okay.
Good evening, council. Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. That's a tough presentation to follow, but I'm going to try my best. It is my distinct pleasure tonight to bring you an overview of the 2023-24 budget for the city of Madera. Where are you? Let's go. Hmm, let's see. Are you? Which one? Nope. Yeah, go for it. There you go. Thank you. So tonight, there's no formal action being requested. This is just for information only. We will, at the end of it, we'll make a recommendation on further action regarding the budget. We're going to start by reviewing some key assumptions, what kind of the thought process that went into the budget. We will review some revenue projections for not only the city as a whole, but also the general fund specifically. And we'll look at some proposed expenditures, both operating and other new requests. So let's start with the 2023-24 budget assumptions. When building a budget, you always start with the economy and how is the economy affecting your specific area? And then the economic conditions right now are kind of up in the air. Inflation is down from a year ago. A year ago, we were looking at nine percent inflation. We're right now, it's the latest numbers were 3.2%. But the Federal Reserve has indicated that they have a mandate of reaching 2%. So there's still a ways to go on curbing inflation. What that means for us is that we are facing higher prices for just about everything, for all the products that we're purchasing, we are seeing higher prices that come through. In addition to that, there is fortunately, consumer confidence seems to be holding steady. The latest numbers show that consumer confidence is is at a people do not expect a recession in the next few months. So that's a good sign that people are still out there spending. And that's very important, particularly here in Madera, where we are so dependent on sales tax. So speaking of sales tax, we also, we work with HDL, our sales tax consultant, to come up with a number that we are going to build into the budget. They provide us a number both for the Bradley Burns rate, which goes into the general fund, as well as revenue collected through measure K. Property tax, we increased it by 2%. Actually, well, you'll see it went up slightly more than 2%, but basically a 2% increase. We're not expecting a large increase in property tax, anything like five, six percent. We're not expecting that in the upcoming year. Mainly because housing interest rates are suppressing purchasing of housing and refinancing. And so as a result, we don't expect a lot of sales of homes and that usually tends to generate additional property tax. So we're kind of keeping it very basic in this budget. Other general and special revenues have a modest 2% to 3% adjustments. Utility rates have been adjusted based on the rates that council approved back in July about a little over a year ago. And we do see a, we do reflect in this budget, a significant increase in interest income. As I mentioned before, interest rates are high. Federal Reserve has a Fed funds rate of right around five and a half percent. That translates into higher interest earnings for any deposits that we have with banks. And so you'll see that that increase in interest revenue. Why that is important is that is no strings attached money. You can use that for in the general fund, you can use it to fund any general fund obligation that you see fit. In the sewer fund, you can use it for any sewer obligation that you see fit. So that interest is becomes a very very powerful tool to help balance the budget and to help fund services here at the city. On the expenditure side, the salaries and benefits are adjusted based on negotiated arrangements. Increases in healthcare premiums and employee stipends are to be paid out of the city reserves per council direction. The health insurance cost is increasing 4% per our health insurance carrier. Vacant positions are budgeted for the number of months that they are anticipated to be filled. So if a position is currently vacant, we don't believe it will be filled until, say, October, we're going to budget for eight months out of the year, not a full year of cost. Retirement is based on CalPERS actuarial studies and operation maintenance costs were increased either by historical trend or by about a 4% adjustment. All right. So now it's time to unveil it. The budget for the city of Madera that we are proposing is a $196.4 million budget. That is an $80.8 million or 69.9% increase over the FY22-23 adopted budget. I've just done a little bit of research. I haven't gone all the way back, but I do believe this is the largest budget in the city of Madera's history. The main reason for this increase is a change in the way we are presenting capital budgets. For several years, you've had in your annual appropriations resolution language that says you're adopting a certain amount and then whatever was unspent in capital practice gets rolled over. I don't think that it gave council the complete picture as to how much was budgeted for capital. So we changed that this year to mirror more closely what is the what the numbers are in the Capital Improvement Plan or CIP. So council probably remembers that its last meeting, it, the engineering department came and presented a $77 million Capital Improvement Plan. That is now fully baked in to the budget, that full 77 million. So that includes unspent money from previous years as well as new money from the current year, but that is the biggest driver in the overall increase. The budget fully funds all approved salary increases, stipends and health insurance costs and all scheduled debt services fully budgeted as well. So here we are on the revenues and the revenue side. We are looking at, again, this is a citywide picture. We are looking at almost $202 million of revenue coming into the, coming into the organization. Again, a lot of that is coming from taxes, is coming from charges for services. But you'll notice the large, large amount of federal grants that is capital dollars that is coming in. A huge amount of capital, specifically ARPA. ARPA, as you might remember, you received $23 million. We have spent as of June 30th, we've spent approximately three and a half million of that. So almost $20 million is baked into this budget to of ARPA money, which is increasing the size of the budget. There you go. No, now you've decided to stop on me. I guess it wants me to talk revenues more. Let's see. Let me see if I can get that working. And I'm trying to get, oh, there it is. There it goes. Okay, thank you. Citywide expenditures. On the expenditure side, you'll see the rather dramatic increase in capital that I was talking about. You'll notice that in 2223, we spent $7.3 million of capital. We have seventy eight point, almost seventy eight and a half million dollars of capital budgeted or proposed to be budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. Salaries and benefits, you'll see the increase there that reflects the salary adjustments that were previously made or that were previously, I previously mentioned, about almost $4 million of salary and benefit increases. Materials and services are also rising again due to inflationary factors and and other commitments. We are also seeing that the materials and services are increasing as well. This is a snapshot of what the budget looks like from, again, on the expenditure side, we're looking at 196.4 million and this is by department. Again, we're looking at the department with a, or as a reflection of capital. We're looking at the department with the largest budget being public works. In the upcoming budget, we're looking at 75, almost 75 and a half million dollars in public works. A lot of that on the sewer, a lot of water, again, ARPA is, you'll hear that time and time again, ARPA is making that budget bigger and bigger. We also have a lot of money in engineering, again, for capital. You see that 33 million, quite an increase over the previous fiscal year where we had only 13 million budgeted or about 13.8. But you're seeing increases throughout the organization, a couple of decreases, one in city manager's office as well as in a small one in the city clerk's office. But otherwise, most of these budgets are going up. Let's look at the general fund specifically. This, these are general fund revenues. General fund revenues are, we are projecting will come in at $43.2 million in the upcoming budget. Most of that is taxes. Again, most of that is sales tax. Our sales tax figure that's baked in here of that 27.3 million, 13 million dollars is sales tax. We have about four, and we'll get to this in the slide, a couple of slides, but we have about four million in property tax and about another seven and a half in property tax in lieu of VLF. But I wanted to raise your, bring your attention to that interest figure line. It's number 34 interest. Notice that in FY2122, we earned $251,000 of interest for the general fund. The budget in FY2223 was 330,000. We actually earned 636. We are projecting a million. Again, that's almost $750,000 of new income to the city that wasn't there before. Let's look at sales tax. And you might remember that I did a discussion on revenues a couple of months ago. And one of the things we focus on was sales tax and how Madera was beating inflation in the sales tax growth. A great chart that the city manager came up with and that I I was just the marketing on. But the, this kind of depicts, but I also mentioned during that that discussion that sales tax, the rate was slowing. And you're going to, you see that in these numbers right here. You'll notice that in FY1920, we were at nine and a half million. 2021, we went to 10.7. 2122, we're at 12.4. This year, we're, we haven't gotten the final allocation from the state. We think we're going to end up at about 12.7 million. And that's only a 2% growth from FY2122. FY2324, we're projecting even a lower rate of growth. Again, this number comes from with consulting with HDL. They're actually the ones that provide us. They think that we're going to, they're going to, Madera is going to be at this amount. But they're only projecting about a, just right at a 1%. So about 13.1 million, very slow growth, not anything like we've seen in the last couple of years. Property tax. It's had its ups and downs. You know, it's in 2020, 1920, it was about 4 million, 2021, 3.8. Then it started coming back up again, 4.2 in 2122, 4.3 million in 2223, this is a projection. And now we're proposing about four and a half million. Property tax in lieu of VLF has grown at a much more steady rate, but we think that's going to start slowing down as well. So at the end of the day, we are projecting between these two revenue streams, it's going to go from about 11.6 to about a 12.1 million, which is about 3% growth or $359,000. These are the general fund expenses by category, the largest in the general fund, the largest single expense is salaries and benefits. $24 million. So just over half of the general fund goes to salaries and benefits. The next category is materials and services. These would be like what we call O and M costs. Interfund charges have gone up a little bit, not as high as they were in 2021, but definitely higher than they were in 2122. These are charges that are billed to, for things like our fleet, our IT, our insurance, that would be costs that are in that line. And then transfers out are for items like debt or for any any other obligation we might have in some other fund. We use those transfer, we use a transfer outline. Again, budget for the year that we're proposing, 42 point, almost 42.9 million dollars. So this is the general fund fund balance summary and what has happened over the last few years. Our 2021 actuals, we had about a $3 million surplus. Our 2122, 2.8. 2223, looks like it's going to come in about 1.7. But the proposed budget is a $352,000 increase in our fund balance. The size of the budget, 42,876,000, under the city's policy of having 30% in reserve. That puts us at about a $12.8 million reserve we need. We have about 12.4? 12.5? No, sorry, 12.3 or 12.4. So we need all this, the 352 plus a little more to make that 30% reserve. We do have that in unallocated fund balance and we are going to use that to make that, cover that difference between the 352 and what's needed. And that is, and we will put that into the reserve. Okay, some highlights in the general fund. General fund is not moving up very much. We're looking at $400,000, 0.94% from FY2223's general fund budget, 42 and a half million. We, the key addition to this budget is that we are adding three permanent positions plus equipment for a permanent safe and clean team. Those positions replace some part-time positions that were here. These will be full-time that will be used to clean various areas of the of the city. The salary increases that were previously approved are fully funded. There is a new administrative assistant position that's being added in the building department. We are converting a vacant park manager position to a parks project manager to facilitate the completion of various parks projects. And then we are maintaining the fire engine replacement fund contribution of $490,000. I'm going to move on to our internal service funds. As I mentioned, we actually have four here in the city. We have facilities, fleet, information technology and insurance. Again, the capital, the increase in capital is spilling into here as well. You'll notice expenditures are going from four and a half million in 202223 to 6.6 billion in 2324. We are proposing to purchase 16 new servers for our IT department. These will both be replacement of existing servers as well as expanding our server capacity to handle the additional work or additional file storage that we need for the organization. Our fleet department, we have a little over 700,000 in new equipment and almost a million dollars of replacement equipment going through there. So pretty significant increase in the amount of equipment that we are buying this year out of our fleet unit. These are enterprise funds and our enterprise funds are they are in healthy shape right now, but even they are experiencing a slowdown in the surplus that's going into the, into their collective fund balance. This year, that the reason for that slowdown is due again, theme of the day, capital. You'll notice we spent $32 million in FY2223. We're proposing to spend 67.6 in 2324. Again, that is mostly capital that is being spent. Okay, that is my high level overview of the budget. I can answer questions on the budget right now. If you want me to continue to master fee schedule, I'd be glad to do that as well.
Continue on.
Continue. Thank you. Okay. So at our last, actually, I don't think it was last meeting. I think it was a couple of meetings ago. I came up here and sought council direction regarding the master fee schedule and possible adjustments. The fees listed in the master schedule, master fee schedule have not been updated since July of 2018. Given the length of time, we sought a direction regarding the fees at the June 21 council meeting. Council said, gave direction, increase fees by 6%, but for only those organizational units whose net cost had increased by more than 6%. After an analysis in looking at different departments, staff is recommending increasing planning fees and code enforcement penalties. We're also recommending approval of a technical adjustment to solid waste fees. So why planning? Why we look at that? Well, this gives you a picture. So why planning? Why we look at that? Well, this gives you a picture of the net general fund support in planning. In two thousand nineteen, twenty, which was the year after the last fee increase, the general fund support to that department was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. Last year, the support was seven hundred thousand. It's almost tripled in the last just basically three fiscal years. The budget is built assuming a nine hundred thousand dollars of general fund support. So the revenue is not increasing, but the expenses, as you could see, are increasing quite substantially. So a fee hike is, we believe is necessary in order to bridge that gap a little bit. So we are proposing a six percent increase in most planning fees. The proposed increase will adjust fees anywhere from seven dollars for a sign, a single sign permit to three hundred and eighty two dollars for a major specific plan amendment that's greater than ten, that involves something greater than ten acres. Assuming activity levels remain constant with F Y twenty two, twenty three levels, the proposed increases will bring an additional fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars of revenue to the city. Next, code enforcement penalties. Code enforcement penalties have not been increased even longer than other master fee schedule. It's been two thousand fourteen, tell almost ten years since code enforcement penalties were increased. Those fines are listed in the Madera municipal code, section one point nine oh six. And then on top of that, you have state law. The, there's a civil code section that says the maximum fine can only be a thousand dollars. What we are proposing is increasing each fine by twenty five dollars, with the exception of the one that is already at a thousand dollars. And I'll show you that on the, in the next upcoming slide. If approved, we anticipate that it will bring an additional thirteen thousand, five hundred in new revenue, assuming violation levels continue where they are right now. So here are the current rates and here are the proposed rates. So the only one that would not be adjusted is the third administrative citation for a violation not automatically or expressly deemed an infraction. That's already at a thousand. Under state law, it has to stay at a thousand. We can't go higher than that. All the others would be increased by twenty five dollars. And this gives you the picture of what those would be. And then lastly, a technical adjustment on solid waste rates. Solid waste rates were approved by council in July twentieth, two thousand twenty two. The rates for multifamily residential users were inadvertently left out of the enabling documents, unfortunately. And so staff is requesting that these rates be officially adopted. This is the rates that were in the rate study. These are the rates that council. I, they approved everything else, but these just were not in the enabling documents. So it's no change to what was discussed back in July of twenty two. But these are the rates that would be implemented for those, those individuals in residential multifamily. So you're probably sitting there going, okay, you know, I don't like any of these rate increases and, you know, I'd like to vote, but you probably baked the revenue into the budget. Well, I'm here to tell you, we didn't. The budget is one thing, these rates are another. If you were to approve them, it would bring additional revenue to the budget, but the budget does not include these revenues in it. So it's a separate, almost a separate item, kind of together, but separate. I will say though, that the solid waste rates, while they're technically not in the budget, there, the expenditures in that fund have been set at a level that assumes the revenue will be collected. In other words, we're getting charged for it by Mid Valley. So we either collect the revenue or we eat out of fund balance is what the difference is there. Fee amendments will have to be voted on at a regularly scheduled meeting and only after a notice to increase the fees is published twice in a local newspaper, at least ten days before the vote is scheduled. And then also, I agree with the former city attorney, who says that an overall fee study is needed. And we will be launching that very, very shortly, sending out an R F P to get a, a consultant on board to do an overall fee study for all the fees within the city. So our recommendation, again, this is informational, no action is being requested. We ask that you return in a special session to consider the proposed budget. We are proposing August twenty fourth, but we're open to any day that you may wish. And, and we'll vote on it. And that is, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mike. We will allow for public comment under this section. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the informational workshop that we have before us?
I had a quick question. How much were the residential increase going up? Hey, but that was.
Let's see, if I can start this again, or did you take me out? Hold on there. Yeah, it's multifamily. Yeah. Oh, yeah, the, the issue is multifamily. It's not single family. It's multifamily residential and no, they are not. Well, there are already scheduled increases that are going into effect. This doesn't change any of those scheduled increases. We're not proposing that. Okay? But the increase, if I can find my cursor.
We're going back to that slide that you had.
Well, that's why I print them out. Yes, it is. It would be going from currently first two dwelling units are twenty three, twenty two, it'd be going to forty one, eighty two. And each additional dwelling unit is twenty two, fifty nine, it would be going thirty eight, forty two.
DJ, before you comment, you need to come up here because we need to record it. And so we can't record it if you're in the audience. So anyone wishing to speak needs to come to the podium. Thank you. Sorry to do that to you.
I'm stiff today. Just a clarification. How much is a single family unit, one single family unit expected to increase?
A single family unit is not going to increase beyond what is already scheduled.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the audience regarding this? At least, do we have any Zoom or written comments on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, bringing it back to my colleagues for this informational, informational report, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Mr. Lima, thank you for your presentation. The question, just to clarify regarding the, the capital improvement budget of close to eighty million dollars added to this new budget. Would it be safe to say that in this fiscal year, all of that amount that's budgeted will be expended out? Or is that also something that could carry over for the following fiscal year?
It is more than likely going to carry over, at least some of it. I do think a lot of it will be completed because we have some deadlines, ARPA. You have to have the money encumbered by December of twenty four and spent by December twenty six. So I do think that a lot of it will be spent because of the sale, but I do anticipate a good chunk of it will be carried over.
So in our past practice, this is why we separated it is because in many cases, some of these projects did not, we didn't complete, therefore it rolled over. But in this case, we're adding everything so that we can get a better, I'm assuming view of how our budget is structured. But if those projects are not completed, then that will carry over to the following fiscal year.
That is correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Also, one more question. You, you mentioned that our biggest source to the general fund are, are taxes and I think twenty seven million, if I, memory serves me right.
Yes.
But also of that are sales tax, which are probably our biggest contributor to revenues, correct?
Yes.
Now, are we seeing a, a slow decline in that? I know that during the pandemic, obviously with money out and about, people were able to spend more, we saw the, the increase. But now it seems like it's kind of plateauing and, and I'm, my, my concern as a council member is that if we depend on these sales tax to, as a form of revenue for our budget is that what are we doing as a council to direct for future growth, to bring in more money to our community, right? We're, we're dependent on sales tax, but that also depends on disposable income. So I, I want to commend you for the presentation, but I will be bringing back something to this council as a proposal on our future agenda items in regards to how we can help increase our economic growth or economic engine in our city to allow for more of that growth in sales tax. I think it's very important. I do see nine million dollars nineteen, twenty. That's kind of when the economy was kind of slowly just starting to get there. And then the pandemic hits, boom, we have a flux of money coming in. And now we're plateauing. I'm just afraid that may start coming down. As you mentioned, the feds are starting to increase the rates. Inflation is kicking in. People are spending less money and we may see a dip in that and I'm concerned about that.
I think your concern is well founded. If you add up the Bradley Burns rate, which is what's on the screen right now, you add up, you include measure T and measure K, it's eleven percent, little over eleven percent of your two hundred million dollars of revenue that's baked into this budget. That's a lot of money to be riding on one revenue stream. And yeah, I think diversification is definitely a goal that, that would work well for this community.
And as you said, you said it best, is rising cost, cost isn't just necessarily what you're buying, it's actually paying out salaries. Any type of benefits and what have you, that cost has to be balanced with the amount of revenues that come in. If not, then obviously we see deficits. But thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montes. Thank you, Director Lima. I had a couple of questions regarding the master fee schedule and enforcement. So I saw on the revenue side, there was a pretty significant drop in the expected revenue. It went from three, something to fifty, to fifty five. Back to.
On the general fund?
Yeah.
Let's see.
So you're going for fines and forfeiture. So last year's actual is five seventy eight and now it's fifty five. That's a, I don't know, I can't, I can't math right now. It's like a thousand percent decrease or something.
It's about a ninety percent decrease. Yeah.
Percent increase either way. So what, what do, are we attributing that to? And, and then it leads me to my next question for, I know we're increasing the fines. But is there anything that we're doing regarding cost recovery? I know they could be covered in the fee schedule. You know, study, but is there anything? And I'm looking at Claudia, I apologize. She's, she's, she's here. So I don't want to put her in a spot or anything. But is there anything that we're looking at actual cost recovery? So there are a few functions that, that we do, that we actually recover some of our costs, not just code enforcement, emergency response fees as well. I know some of them are not dictated by our master fee schedule. But is there anything that we're doing to look at that and say, okay, we wanted to true cost recovery? Because if we haven't increased our fees since you say fourteen, then we haven't increased what we're charging, but we're paying a lot more.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And that gets back to that fee study that I mentioned, that we're going to be hiring the consultant to do, to come in and look at those to see, are we charging anywhere near cost recovery on these fees? And, and therefore be able to generate additional revenue through that. Obviously, the goal is not, and code enforcement is not to have additional revenue, it's to cure the issues. But there would be some, I, I, my feeling is that we are not at cost recovery. But I think a consultant would be able to better answer that. And that's the action that we plan to take in the upcoming fiscal year.
So that's just an assumption that we're, we're so good that we're just going to have people voluntarily comply. Good. I don't know if she's that good. She can get it done if anybody can.
I, I think that's a probably just a safe estimate for right now is all that is. Uncertain as to what the actuals are going to come into. So I think that was just a safe estimate. But do I, getting back to your earlier point, do I think we need to look at all fees in general? Yes, I do think we do that and we're planning to take that action. Okay, thank you. Answer my questions.
Are there any further comments from my colleagues, Councilwoman Gaius?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Director Lima, one question. Can you go back to the slide where it's code enforcement fines? And we said we're raising all of them, but one to twenty five dollars is, was there a magical formula? Or did we just say that just a baseline until we get the consultants in to give us a more of a bird's eye view?
It was a baseline just until the consultant come, come in and give us a, a bird's eye view. Yeah, we, we, we were very sensitive. If you look on this slide and look at the first administrative citation, violation automatically or expressly deemed infraction. We're right now at seventy five dollars. We thought anything above twenty five would be pretty onerous on people. And so at that point, we decided just to keep it all at twenty five. We felt very safe about that. And that's why we went with the twenty five dollars.
Perfect. Thank you for that answer. That's all, Mayor.
Also, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm just going to piggyback on Councilmember Montes' term, the cost recovery. So just so that I know, and maybe here in the audience, cost recovery is baking in all the cost that it takes for a department expenditures, but also making sure that we collect sufficient funds for that service. For example, you brought up the planning, a planning department, right? This is how much they expend, this is how much they collect. Therefore, there's a deficit in that amount and we have to capture those funds by increasing our fees. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
So I know that as council members, we sit here as trying to be a good fiscal stewards of taxpayers' money. So it's not something that I like to jump on. I'd like to look at alternatives, if possibly, to retain additional revenues so that these costs don't bear the burden on the residents. But I understand, like you said, and you made it, you made it very clear, the cost of services are going up. Everything's going up because of inflation, although inflation's been tamed down to three percent. People are still spending money and it seems like prices are continuing to go up. I don't know if that's a cause of what supply and demand is, but it certainly seems that if there's a big demand for something, you're going to have to pay the price for it. And it just, for me, it just seems like I just don't want to make this a burden on taxpayers. I hope that when we get the study, it, it can show that this is a very fair increase in whatever fee we do. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, two comments to that. First, regarding inflation and the ARPA dollars, I'll get back to that. You know, we have twenty three million dollars of ARPA. We're using it, I think, very wisely on infrastructure. Fresno has a hundred and seventy million. Clovis has a hundred million. Their, Fresno is putting some of that in the infrastructure. Clovis is putting some of that in infrastructure. And we're all chasing the same contractors to do the work and that increases the price. Yeah, because they can, they can do it. So there, that dynamic is going on out in the economy right now with those dollars. And until the dollars get spent, that economy, that, that factor is still going to occur. Second, I wanted to just briefly touch on your comment about, you know, are there alternative ways? Are there other ways looking? When we looked at this, when the city manager and I looked at these, at this fee study, we looked at all departments and it was at your suggestion, I might add, and thank you for that. But we looked at all departments and the only one that we felt we could bring to council with a rate increase, where a rate increase was actually needed and not some other action was planning. And I see my colleague, the Parks Director right here. Frankly, I think parks fees are a little low. But he came in and he said, you know, I want to try some marketing. I want to try some different things and see if I can raise revenue that way. So that's why we've held off on parks. I think after a fee study, we probably will see a small increase. But I think we all wanted to see other initiatives tried before fees. I guess I want to convey to council that fee increases are our last resort. We really have that commitment. And if we're bringing to you a fee increase, it's because we don't think we can get to cost recovery without that. So I want you to have that assurance.
I, I wanted to say thank you because in many of these workshops, it's present, taking information and then that's it. But actually dissecting to that same information that you're presenting, explaining that, I think really helps not only this council, but it helps our audience understand why this is our last resort and why this must be done if, if, if it needs to be done. But thank you for explaining that. I really appreciate you answering those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Montes.
Just allow me a retort. I do, I do agree with Councilmember Rodriguez about just not across the board cost recovery fees. I don't, I'm, that's not what I'm in favor of. So again, there are certain activities like parks where, you know, senior citizens, they get to swim for a dollar, right? That's not, raising it to fifty might be more in line with the cost, but that's not something that I'm advocating for. But for enforcement fees, that's a little different story and I have, you get a little less sympathy from me when you have our employees have to go out and do enforcement because you, maybe you're doing something wrong now. There's an education component to that. I mean, I know that's how we operate. We're not just going to go hammer somebody. there's an education component to that. I mean, I know that's how we operate. We're not just going to go hammer somebody with fines. Hey, if you didn't know what you were doing is wrong, fine, no harm, no foul, fix it. But if we have the ones perpetual line steppers, people that are just kind of always doing things like that. You know, I'd vote like, hey, we can increase those fines. So we can have that true cost recovery. You're, you know, we need to make sure that they're paying their fair share and they're necessitating this kind of action. So I just wanted to clarify, and I agree with Councilman Rodriguez, that some things I think that they do warrant or merit a subsidy.
Yeah. Okay.
All righty. This is an informational item only. We'll be meeting again on this item.
Yeah.
Feature. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time. We will now move on to item B, the consent calendar. Consent calendar matters are listed on consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Do any members of the public wish to speak regarding the consent calendar? Either in written form, Zoom, otherwise?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I so much approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Viejas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We approve the consent calendar. We will now move on to item C. There are no public hearings. We will move on to item D petitions, bids, resolutions and ordinances and agreements. Item D one is a third amendment to existing service provider agreement with O N E Transportation LLC relating to litter abatement in the Fresno River. Commander Chiamonte, do you have this item?
Yes.
All righty.
Mayor, council, members of the public, thank you for your time. Gino Tramani, Commander with Madera Police Department. What I'm bringing to you today is a third amendment to the agreement with O N E, which is a company who does our litter abatement for the city of Madera. The city entered into an agreement in May of two thousand twenty two with O N E Transportation to assist with litter abatement efforts along the Fresno River. That has since expanded. It is not just the Fresno River. It is along some of our railways and public areas within town. The initial agreement was for two hundred and fifty thousand paid by the general fund budgets. We had a first amendment to the agreement approved in January of two thousand twenty three for an increase. And then we had a second amendment approved in June of two thousand and twenty three, which provided an additional sixty thousand dollars through September thirtieth. The agreement on the amendment, city staff is seeking an increase in the agreement with O N E for an additional services totaling a hundred thousand dollars. In addition, if council approves the increased amount, staff recommends extending the contract term through March thirty first, two thousand twenty four. One of the issues with our financial impact is is as the city has yet to adopt our current budget, which we just had a workshop on, the requested action, if approved, would allow for continuation of services. Pending our approval of the contract extension, staff, we will return at a future meeting for permission to add expenditures to the city's budget. The city received confirmation from the state legislature of the intent to award three hundred thousand dollars for river cleanup. These offset, these costs will be offset, taken on by the general fund. With that, that was get done by Councilwoman or Senator Anna Caballera and Assemblywoman Soria. Those are currently in the state budget, but it is unfunded. So once that budget is funded, that will, that money will be returned to the general fund. In your current report, there was a minor typo, which was included in the resolution submitted to council and is highlighted in red below. At the end of the resolution, it stated March thirty first, two thousand twenty three, which the contract would extend through. That number should be two thousand twenty four. A corrected copy has been filed with the city clerk's office. Recommendation from the police department is to adopt the resolution approving the third amendment to the services provider agreement with O N E Transportation for services at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars and extension of the term through March thirty first, two thousand twenty four. What this adopted resolution would allow, it would allow us time for the safe and clean team, if approved through our current budget that was presented in the workshop, it will allow us time to hire the three employees to take over this work that would be completed by O N E. So that is our request from council at this moment.
Thank you, Gino. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on item D one regarding the third amendment? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments regarding item D one?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or a motion. Also, Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Commander Tramani, question for you regarding the cleanup. How is that being, how is that taking place with the with the team, the O N E? What exactly is their duties out there? Are they when you say litter abatement, can you just expand on that?
Yes, the main, the main project was to clean up the Fresno River. That was the main priority of this project. We, this was coming out of COVID. We had a lot of homeless encampments and large encampments that had taken over not only the river, but along the city. And so they partnered with our code enforcement team who goes out and marks these and provides direction to where the cleanup needs to occur. Over the last week or two, a lot of the direction has come from the public. They will call into the police department and inform us of locations that they see popping up or requesting assistance with with cleanup. I know I've talked to a few residents along the Riverview location that was near the fires from two years ago that or last year, I apologize, that have asked us to use those services. And we go out, we scout the locations, and then we'll notify O N E once proper notification is done.
And you mind if I ask, like, how often is that that they're coming out and doing that? Is that like on a weekly basis, monthly? Every so often when they called or you
They average about four days a week, and it's usually on the Monday through Friday, depending on holidays, but they're averaging four days a week. And we're averaging about eleven bins a week in the last month.
Awesome. I will say that certain, certain folks, residents have really made positive comments in regards to how the river looks. So I want to commend the staff that's helping with that. So thank you. And appreciate you explaining and expanding on the the duties of the O N E. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions and or comments, I'll ask for a motion from my colleagues.
I'll move to approve with the correction that Commander mentioned.
Second.
Motion to approve item D one, D one by Councilmember Montes with the corrections added. Second by Councilmember Viejas. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you very much, Commander. We now move on to item D two. Issue a notice of award for two social equity commercial cannabis business permits to Nabrina Madera LLC and California Connoisseur LLC. James, I believe you have this item. I see your screen.
James, you're on mute. James, we cannot hear you.
James, could you unmute yourself? We can see your screen, but we cannot hear you.
It appears that you're unmuted right now, but I'm not too sure if your microphone is not picking it up. We can see your screen, James, but we cannot hear you.
Okay.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, got it?
Yes, but we're kind of looking at the presentation itself. We're looking at the side by side. So maybe if you can, I'm not too sure how many monitors you're operating with.
Can you see it now?
No.
Okay. What about them Niners?
We still cannot see it, James.
Just me?
Hey, James, the shared screen stopped. I'm not too sure if that was on on your end, or if you can share your screen again. We can see you and you're unmuted, but we cannot see your screen.
We're getting a cooldown. Yay.
Maybe for the meantime, if Will or Gary have the PowerPoint and you can share, and then maybe James, if you can walk council through it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I can go ahead and share my screen with the with the PowerPoint presentation, if so desired.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, do we have my screen?
We have your screen, but we need to remove the slides on the side.
Yes, I'll go ahead. There we go. Give you a full presentation at this point?
Not just yet.
Not this yet, huh?
Okay, so this is a request for city council award of two social equity cannabis permits.
Yeah, can James, if you can just give us a second here, Gary.
Sure, sure, sure.
Can you go into presentation mode, please?
I got, I'm seeing another
Yay.
PowerPoint presentation. I'm seeing, I think this perhaps is James in my view at this very moment.
Okay, I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay, I'll stop sharing my particular screen. All right. So they give you one screen up there.
And now Gary, can now, can now the PowerPoint's not showing at all.
All right, so give me a second then, sir.
It's okay. Just take your time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure again. All right, who's you have my screen up then?
Not yet.
Yeah. A different screen being shared. My apologies.
We have the screen. We just need to eliminate the slides unless, there we go. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
James, if you mind, just tell me when to change the slide.
Sure, this is a notice for council request to award two social equity commercial cannabis permits. Next. On December first, two thousand twenty one, the city council adopted resolution number twenty one one sixty seven, authorizing that the council may award two social equity cannabis permits. Next. As the council knows, we've been through this many times with city council updates on cannabis. There's, it's a four step process. Phase one, the city received two social equity applications. The applicants were Nabrina Madera LLC and California Connoisseur LLC. Both applicants, both applications were deemed complete. Phase two, the both applications were scored by H D L. Both applicants scored over ninety percent. Both applicants advanced to the phase three community meeting. Next. Phase three community meeting, property owners were notified of the phase three meeting by mail within a three hundred foot radius. And emails were sent by the Chamber of Commerce and everyone that was on the city listserv. With the phase three community, social equity community meeting was held at the Pan American Center on May fourth, two thousand twenty three. Both applicants presented their proposal and the applications were commented by the public. Tonight is phase four, and city council is to review the application record and take action on whether the social equity cannabis business permit should be granted to one or both applicants. Next. This is a non-public hearing. Applicants must complete all land use entitlements prior to a regular cannabis business permit being issued. It's a non-public hearing, but the public can comment on any on this item. And public notification is subject to the council approved application procedure and guidelines. And the application procedure and guidelines for phase four, it stresses that the that the city council interview the applicants to determine if they're comfortable awarding the social equity permits. If they, if they wish, if the council wishes to award the permits, it should adopt the attached resolution and the staff report to Nabrina Madera and California Connoisseur. And both applicants are in the audience. Take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak and or ask questions regarding this item under public comment? If so, please step to the microphone. Seeing none. Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions. Mr. Rodriguez.
So thank you very much, Mayor. There is an item in the ordinance where the applicants will make a presentation before the council, if the council so desires. So that's at the discretion of council, obviously. Thank you.
Well, obviously, if there's a, we have time for that. So if they would like to come up, yes, we can have them present.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Would you Nabrina Madera?
Do you have our PowerPoint? I believe it was sent to James. I mean, maybe James has it.
James, if you can forward it to me, this is Arnoldo. I'll upload it for them. Thank you.
I have it on my laptop as well, if that's easier, but.
Try.
Well, it's probably harder to
Yeah, harder to connect, I figured. I mean, yeah, I can grab my laptop. Oh, yeah, I might be able to throw it on the ceiling. I can forward it to you via email.
And that works. Or James, James, are you going to forward it to me? You've probably done so already. James. And to the other applicants in the audience, if you have the same thing, if you can forward your presentation. A Rodriguez.
We could take a two, three minute recess, let's say, and let's give us some time. So we'll take a recess right now. And hopefully we can get this to So we'll take a recess right now and hopefully we can get this to. There did only two applicants, right?
Oh, yeah, but we want to hear, we want to, we're going to prove that we're in the Derry City Council, I think, Colin. You titled it Comedera City Council?
I believe so, yeah, yeah, Comedera City Council meeting.
Okay. And so I'm just going to put it up here.
That's fine.
And then.
Sweet, and you can put it in present mode, I know.
Yeah, how to use it? Yeah, there's a little trick to this.
Oh, I see, because you got to put it on the second one, because when you put it in presentation, it pops into there. That makes sense.
Yeah. Here we go. Cause you're up right now.
Did you guys, and it's. Come back, Jose, Steve? Come back and so.
You obviously know how to use it.
I do indeed, thank you so much, just arrows, right? Yep, perfect.
They're ready. Yeah. Okay, we're back from the break, we can proceed now.
Perfect. Council members, members of the public, thank you so much for your time. I'm just going to go through real quick, this is our team. You can see Brandon Banks, our chief executive officer. My name is Colin Madden, I'm the chief operations officer. Ashley Block is our chief compliance officer and Fernando right here is our chief of community engagement. Our site is located at 123 North D Street, zoned C1, around 6,800 square feet, eight regular parking spaces and plans to update landscaping, lighting and designated receiving parking space. Our proposed exterior facility and existing facility design, you can kind of see what the space looks like on the bottom right now and what we plan to do to improve that space. There are some proposed design options, different things that we're thinking of for the interior. Lighting improvements, adequate lighting controls, no excess spillage, new LED lighting and fixtures, making sure that we're not causing any sort of light nuisance in the neighborhood. So one of the things that we hold really close to our hearts in cannabis is our security and surveillance. You know, it's one of those things that we want to make sure we're providing a safe place for people to come to learn about cannabis and to retain those customers. So obviously, we have very robust security protocols 24/7. We verify identification of all of our customers, obviously, our employees and any authorized visitors. That would be people that are delivering things to our our establishment or any visiting police officers, anything like that. We do have designated limited access areas. What that means is our facility is cut off in certain areas where the general public is not going to be gained access to that. So obviously, behind our counters, in our vaults, our manager rooms, stuff like that. We have licensed security personnel on site 24 hours a day. We have an anti-loitering policy, safety and emergency preparedness. We have intense communication with police departments and hold that very near and dear to our heart. We want to make sure that we're being transparent with police, that, you know, they can come, they can tour our facility, they can come see everything that we do and also to give police access to our numbers. They can look at what's going on, they can look at our cameras when they want to. So big piece for us is the communication with police and then obviously intrusion and theft prevention. Oh, did I go off of it somehow? Oh, there we go. Odor control management is another thing that we really want to focus on. We want to minimize possible sources of odor. Luckily, the state of California, almost everything is prepackaged, right? So we don't have giant bags of cannabis that we're trying to weigh little pieces out. That's where you're going to see a lot of odor escaping. Don't do that here, so everything's already sealed. There's no processing of any cannabis on site. Anything that comes to us is already ready to just go straight out the door. We also will implore odor control devices such as activated charcoal filters and HEPA filters. We have a very big piece of staff training, making sure that all of our staff understands the importance of odor control. We have a big HVAC upgrades that's going to help move the air through the building so that we're not getting any buildups. Obviously, I mentioned already that everything is sealed, constant monitoring and potential use of a certified industrial hygienist. So somebody that has kind of taken a look at our plans and said, yeah, if you've got airflow problems, we can do this, we can move things out. So that certified industrial hygienist. Employment benefits, this is a big piece for us. You know, we believe that no matter what, everyone should be able to make a living wage. And with cannabis, we are going to try to hire at least 80% from the Madera community. It's very important that the people that work in our shop are represented by the people who live in Madera. A living wage of between $23 and $24 an hour, continuing education and career growth opportunities. You know, a lot of people think a dispensary is just a place you're going to go in and put on a tie dye shirt and grow your hair long and worked there for a couple of years. But you know, something I've been in cannabis for 10 years, this is a business that has brought me and my family a lot of prosperity and and to be able to continue to give education and growth within a wonderful business is very important to us. We issue paid volunteer days. What that means is every every month we pay our employees to go out and volunteer in in the community. We want to make sure that we're not just a cannabis company that's bringing a need to the citizens of Madera, but that we're also a part of that community. We do have subsidized health insurance and we'll be creating anywhere from 15 to 25 new jobs. Again, thank you so much for your time and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have any public, do you want to say anything at all? Okay, all right, I want to give you the opportunity. Are there any members of the public wishing to ask any questions regarding this proposal? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do we have any Zoom or written questions?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Bring it back to my colleagues for any comments or questions. Councilmember Rodriguez, sorry.
I want to say councilmember, maybe I probably had her first, so go ahead, I'll let you.
Oh, you were first, but okay. Oh, I have two questions, the first one about the odor control. I wanted to see why would trigger the use of the certified industrial hygienist?
I mean, that's just, it's something that we've done before in past projects, having an industrial hygienist come on. It's not something that was required by the city of Madera, but just something where if, you know, down the line, we're like, oh, gosh, you know, the HEPA filters aren't working as great as we want them to. But honestly, I think almost all of the projects that we go through have an industrial hygienist to at least come on and take a look at our odor control plans. So we'll probably employ one no matter what.
So on an on as needed basis.
Yeah, I mean, I think again, you know, when you're in the process of kind of creating some of these things, you want to, you know, have somebody, but industrial hygienist tends to be a little pricey. So at awarding the license, we're happy to employ an industrial hygienist to look at our plans to make sure that we're doing all the things we need to.
Thank you. And my second question is, what would it take to move that percentage up from 80% being Madera hired? Like, what kind of skill set are we needing?
Yeah, I mean, you know, honestly, on on an entry level, I think very easy to hire 80%. I think the only the only positions that that we may not have a skill set for already in Madera would be like our general manager, you know, somebody who's familiar with metric, meaning they the the state system that you record all of your cannabis sales with. That that's a very important piece of running a regulated dispensary. And so our general manager would need to have at least some experience with that. Now, that's not to say there aren't citizens in Madera who have worked in a dispensary somewhere else. Maybe they drive to Fresno every day in order to work in a dispensary or I'm not sure how many cities around Madera have legalized cannabis. But you know, we're, our goal is to hire, of course, 100% from the Dayer community. We want to be realistic in saying that, you know, it may only be around 80, but happy to, happy to hire 100% of them.
Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Potemahia for asking that question. That was actually in the lines of the question that I had.
Absolutely.
Your language states trying to get to at the least 80%. So when I see language that says trying to, I was hoping that I can get a commitment and you say that you do at least 80%, not try. I think that's an important part of the metrics with the awarding points, I think, was local employment, which I thought was great. I do want to say that I'm glad that we're finally here at the fourth phase to see that certain licenses will be awarded. And I'm very excited to see how this is going to develop. I like your presentation, I like the 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 then and before and how that location will look. I hope it brings prosperity to your business, but at the same time, brings prosperity not only to our city, but also the neighborhood surrounding that. We expect that you honor their commitment that you have to the community and that's something that this council will hopefully review in the future. But thank you again. Question for you is regarding your security, is that also part of the 80% of the employment? Or is that something that you bring in on your own?
No, I think, you know, we created the security plan with a security company. You know, I think security guards, obviously, again, you know, a very specific skill set. I don't see any reason why there wouldn't be Madera residents that have that skill set. So yes, absolutely, I think, you know, our security guards, people on patrol, also the people, you know, paying attention to our security monitoring would also be part of that Madera employment.
Thank you, Colin. Just to reiterate what Mayor Potemahia had mentioned is that that number can go up higher, it'd be great. I do understand your position, though. Certain managers that understand the business, I don't know that we have that here. I obviously, we don't have a dispensary or a retail store at the at the moment, but we hope that we can create those positions and hopefully thrive in our community as well.
Yeah, I mean, again, one of the things that I've done in my time in cannabis, the company I worked for before this, I was the training director. So we created an entire training program for all 17 dispensaries that that we ran. So, you know, one of my biggest pieces is training, is making sure people get the training and making sure that people have a clear path to what their next step is. How do I become assistant manager? How do I become general manager? How do I move up in this company? So it's very important to us to hire as many Madera residents as possible and create those situations for them.
Thank you, and not to put you on the spot, but you are the engagement director, right? You'll be engaging our community.
Yes, I'm actually a local contractor, I'm a general contractor here in Madera, too.
Awesome. Yeah, good to hear, awesome, thank you, appreciate that. Awesome.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor, just a question, I see the facility that you're going to take over is the Heinz Hospice, which is a nonprofit organization here locally. So are you going to work with them and and be just mindset of them moving out of this facility and giving them enough time to relocate?
Yeah, of course, again, I'm not directly connected to them exiting the premises and us taking over. So I don't know what sort of what sort of agreement's been worked out or if they already have a new place. Or typically, if, you know, we're coming into somewhere and somebody's moving out, then we are, you know, helping with their move costs and things like that. So again, I don't know exactly what those are, so I don't want to promise anything that that we don't have on paper already, but I would imagine there's something already said.
Perfect, thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Seeing any more questions, could you go back to that slide regarding the contributions from your company to the community?
Sorry. Oh, perfect. This one, the employment benefit slide?
This is the employment benefits, what about, well, you have 80% to the community, but are there benefits to the community besides providing jobs and then volunteer days? Have you considered anything like scholarships to?
Yeah, so I mean, again, in in previous communities that we've been a part of beyond volunteer days, we also contribute to local organizations, so similar, you know, nonprofit organizations. Food banks are very important to us. Also, obviously, the Madera region, lots of agriculture, so, you know, donating to pieces like that. We're absolutely committed to being a part of the community in more than just volunteer days and and jobs. We absolutely are willing to listen if you have better ideas, if you think, you know, donating isn't enough, you want to do something similar to what you suggested, we're all ears. Any way that we can become a more ingratiated part of the community, that's what we want to do.
We, as was mentioned before, we totally are bought into that you become successful. This is what we want. We are a business friendly community and we want you to be successful. At the same time, we have problems here in our in our in our area, in our region of the Central Valley, low income folks, we have a lot of agriculturally based jobs. We still don't bring a lot of revenue into homes in our area. Thank God that we have a Madera Community College that provides quality education. It's actually growing, I don't know if you've had a chance to go out there and visit the community college. We can certainly provide you with an introduction to Dr. Angel Zaina.
Amazing.
Who was a farmer worker and grew up as a farmer worker, he's now the doctor and president of Madera Community College. Where I'm going with this is that if we would consider providing scholarships to local residents, local residents in our community who need just a little bit of help to be able to continue their their college education, I think that would be an excellent point of discussion for us.
Absolutely, and future cannabis growers scholarship, I love it.
Yeah, yeah, well, again, consider that. Because we definitely have that that type of need in our community for for scholarships to our local community college. It makes sense for us to be able to provide for them to go to our local community college. We are very excited about the community college that did not exist a while back and it does exist now and it provides an education for our local residents that don't have to go all the way to Clovis or Fresno or to Merced for their education. They can get a college education right here in our community.
I love it, any way that you feel we're going to be the most impactful, we're all ears.
Thank you, and I'll make that introduction if you like.
Thank you so much, yes, of course.
Mayor Potemahia.
I wanted to turn it off. I don't have questions.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor, just to chime in in the mayor's comment, and here you've put hire at least 80% from Madera, living wages $23 to $24 and you've kind of gotten suspicious. Oh, my gosh, can't talk to you. Specific things here, so my question is, is do you have a percentage that you're going to specifically say that would be for the community nonprofits?
You know, I don't believe that that percentage has been set exactly. And again, I'd hate to promise anything that, you know, doesn't go directly from my my chief executive officer, but I think, you know, absolutely, there'd be a percentage that we can put on paper. We'd be absolutely be willing to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Excellent. Any further questions? Okay, I believe, thank you very much for your presentation, we'll move on to the second presentation.
Thank you.
Do we have another presentation?
I think it'd be appropriate, Mayor, to take a couple of minute break.
Okay, all righty, we can do that, let's take a five minute break.
Sounds good, thank you.
We reconvene at 8:15.
James, if you wouldn't mind, give me a call. This is.
Are we ready?
We are back. Thank you.
Evening, council and residents. Uh, we are California Cannabis Sewer. We're going to start off by introducing ourselves. We froze.
There we go. You got it.
Okay. Uh, my name is, uh, Raul Deluna, uh, born and raised in Madera. Um, second generation Maderan. Uh, just a little bit about myself. Uh, um, I have three children. Uh, my wife is currently in audience with me. Uh, we've lived in Madera our whole lives. Um, I am a, a college graduate from President City College. I, I graduated from, um, uh, the Electrical Systems Technology Program. Um, nearly, uh, fifteen years in, uh, managing vertical integrated commercial cannabis company. Um, um, currently, um, employed in, um, HVAC right now for a local company, Kelly's Comfort Heating and Cooling. And, um, so that's just a little bit about myself. Uh, go ahead and, and lots who are.
Hello, my name's Suliman Javed. So I was also born and raised here in Madera. Um, yeah, I have two kids and I'm married. And I operated a small cannabis delivery service in, uh, the Tri Valley Pleasant and Livermore area. And, uh, so we are pretty much California Cannabis Sewer and this is Herman.
Hi, my name is Herman Inigas. I'm a general contractor, electrical contractor and a solar contractor out of Fresno. Um, born and raised in Sanger. Um, I've known these guys since we were kids, you know what I mean? But, uh, um, I have two, two boys. And that's pretty much it. That's who I am. I work, I work every day, night and day. So, yeah.
So we're, we're located at one hundred Southeast Street. Um, and so, so we support the Madera General Plan Vision. And, you know, we plan on giving a lot of, uh, money to the community as far as we've been already helping out with the food bank and the mission. Um, so, so, uh, with the downtown association also endorsed us. And I'm sorry for us, uh, kind of being off. We, uh, we didn't know we had to present. And so, so we're kind of winging it. This was the presentation we had at Pan Am. Um, you know, and we, we want to do a lot for downtown. Yeah. Uh, growing up here, uh, you know, we've seen the condition of it outside and we want to spend a lot of money, uh, you know, to improve it. We also want to spend a lot with the parks here locally. You know, because, uh, I, my daughter, if I take her there, the state wasn't really that great of the park, you know? That would want her to, uh, play there. Um, you know, security, we plan on having twenty-four seven, uh, security there at the, uh, facility. Um, the same thing with odor prevention. We, we will be, uh, you know, implanting HEPA filters. Um, and we, we should employ anywhere from fifteen to twenty people. We'll provide healthcare for them. You know, and they will have a, a, you know, a fair living wage.
Just like Solomon said, I mean, we're, we're a hundred percent local. Um, we are going to try a hundred percent to a hundred percent, uh, employ local Maderians. Uh, we would like to get back to our community. Uh, after all, we're born and raised here and, uh, we don't plan on going nowhere.
Again, we'll also create an advisory board that's going to help, uh, you know, and hopefully we can get some of the council members on there. And that can help us direct some of the funding to help the city as well. And that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Already put you on the spot and, uh, but, uh, but you did okay. You did all right. Um, we'll bring it, uh, back to the public. Uh, any members of the public wishing to ask any questions or make a comment regarding this presentation? Seeing none. Uh, do we have any Zoom or written comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and or comments. Uh, council member Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Garcia. I just want to say thank you for coming up. I think part of that phase four is for you to present. And this way the council gets to know who lives in Madera, who has kids in Madera. And, you know, we feel comfortable that with your engagement in our community, and again, like I said in the previous, is that we, we wish you to prosper because if you prosper, the city of Madera prospers.
Absolutely.
And, and so do the volunteers, so do the funds, so do the parks and what ha- what have you. I mean, these are some of the plans that you put out. And we just, uh, expect that you honor those and you continue to make Madera your home. And, and, you know, do the good things that you mentioned you would, because that's important for us. I think the mayor spoke earlier and talked about the need for Madera. Uh, for us, you know, Madera is a flyby town for many folks that want to come and reside somewhere. They look at certain things in Madera. They just don't, maybe education, maybe work, labor pool. But you know what? We, we can make that a difference by, by providing the, the elements that you bring in this, uh, in this plan of yours. I just, again, I ask that you honor every one of those. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Potemahia.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, and I appreciate you investing in Madera. Um, I wanted to know more, if you could expand on the city approved youth outreach program? What is it about? How would it work and when would it launch?
Well, one, if we could do something for like, kind of like a deer, you know, to talk more to the children about.
Cannabis awareness.
Uh, yeah, cannabis awareness in the community. And, uh, you know, and provide more like scholarships, how, uh, you know, the mayor was speaking about, that was also part of in our application. So there's just more stuff for the community. I mean, like, you know, growing up here, you know, we've come a long way, I think, in the city. And I hope that we can continue to, you know, prosper and we can help, help the city prosper.
And not just get a, a scholarship for cannabis. I mean, we, we try to help out our, our, our local, um, residents, um, for whatever field they're trying to, uh, achieve in life, you know? Whatever careers they choose to, um, to take their path and their careers.
Thank you.
Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, again, um, say, state, as I said earlier, for the other presentation, there's two things that I'm very, very interested, um, in bringing cannabis to our community. Uh, first of all, if you did not know, uh, cannabis was banned in our community for years, uh, and we were successful, um, uh, with the approval of the city council here to, to open up the possibility of bringing a new revenue stream into our, into our community, diversifying our, our economy here by creating a new revenue stream. Uh, but with that, we wanted to make sure, on, on at least personally, there, we look at two items that are very important and near and dear to my heart. One is fighting addiction in any way, shape or form. And the other one is providing some type of, of, uh, community, uh, benefit, um, to our community. And for me, I believe, uh, scholarships are, are one um, way of doing it. It, there's other ways of doing this, but there's, uh, for myself, there's those two things. If we could look at, uh, helping people with their addictions, making sure that, because our community was very concerned when we brought this up, uh, for, for a vote. Now, that was one of the major concerns. It was about addiction. So a lot of people are not educated about the types of addictions. Um, they, they were not aware that you can buy cannabis and it doesn't have any, uh, uh, hallucinogenic, uh, in, in, you know, certain, uh, uh, medical, uh, help that they could use for, um, uh, for soreness, et cetera. Um, but, uh, if we can look at in the future, uh, look at providing some type of services to fight addictions and use up some of the revenues for that. And then, and the other one is for scholarships. And, but that's mine. Uh, that's my, uh, my two points. But thank you very much for coming to our community, being from the community and, uh, trying to help out our community. We wish success and, um, if, uh, uh, we can open it up for a couple of more comments. Uh, Mayor Potemahia.
I'd just like to say something before, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, with some of your suggestions, uh, we'd be open to have a seat for you on our advisory board on, on where to allocate some of these funds, uh, for tax dollars.
And I'm, I'm with you on the helping people out with their addictions. I understand I'm gonna, I'm a, I'm a, a recovering drug and alcoholic addict for nineteen years. So I totally understand.
Right. Thank you. Mayor Potemahia.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. No worries. Um, and just also crediting the community voters approved measure R. So, you know, they are, Madera's pretty much was showed great, uh, being in, in great favor of having cannabis sales here and, um, is there, you had mentioned during the presentation that there was an amount or, or a donation. I want to know if there's, if there's a commitment to donate a certain amount annually or?
Yeah, we don't have, uh, like a set amount, but, uh, I mean, the past two years with the food bank, we've been, uh, donating all the chickens there for the, uh, Thanksgiving. Um, you know, we've been helping out with Toys for Tots. So, uh, I mean, as of now, we don't have a set number, but definitely, you know, we, we want to keep donating and we will. And like, you know, with the help of the advisory board, we want to, uh, you know, we'll kind of allocate the funds that way with the help of, you know, council and, you know, the other people on the boards.
Thank you.
Good. With no further comments, uh, I'm sorry. I keep missing that. I apologize. I do keep missing your button over here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Women Gallegos.
I appreciate the time. Um, again, thank both, uh, cannabis companies for coming out and presenting, but, uh, we talk about donations in the city and helping out, but I see we have two great general contractors here. And, um, I have been in another city at Kermin where they have people go out and put together parks. Uh, parks is my passion. We need some parks, like you said, Sunamun, in the city and general contractor.
And general contractors are, can volunteer their time in kind, not just money. I'm putting together parks which would save a lot of money on our end as a city and help out this community a lot. So I'm glad we've got some faces here I know to look for when we need some stuff. So, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And I, I figured it out. What's wrong with this is that there's glare from that light right there and it kind of blinks it up. But I'll, I'll make an effort to continue looking for that button when you want to press something. Seeing no further comments, I'll ask for my colleagues for a motion.
Move to approve item D2.
I'll second.
Hey, you guys are going to have to fight over that second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve item D2 by Councilmember Montez, second by Councilmember Rodriguez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is unanimous. The ayes have it. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to item D3, co-locator lease agreement with Madera Unified School District. Mr. Ebert.
Where is it?
The desktop.
Where is it? It's even better. Why am I not picking up on this? D2, right here, right? Here we go. This is it? Yeah.
How long did it take us to fill the first ones? Spenceries after we passed the ballot, man, July 21st.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, remaining guests. Joe Abear, Parks Department, presenting item D3, co- locator lease agreement with the Madera Unified School District. Madera Unified School District requested a, to lease some office space from us at the John Wells Center. We went through a number of discussions with them and internally. And we, we went through a planning, designing, construction. When this construction of the office was made, that was, there was the idea that it could be made available for non-city agencies such as a co-locator. The intent of this agreement would provide direct services, program, advocacy and other, other activities that would benefit youth of the city. The office space that we have at John Wells, right now, it's the home office for recreation, aquatics, sports, aging services and special events programming. Right now, we have myself and five full-time staff and various part-time staff who come in and out of the center. MUSD wishes to lease the office space. So it's kind of hard to hear. If we could keep down the, the comments, that we appreciate that. Thank you. So, so MUSD wishes to lease office space for several staff, including, but not limited to expanding learning program coordinator, an expanding learning program manager, a director of athletics and community affairs, and two administrative assistants. We had some internal discussions and we figured the best course of action would be to lease the first floor, which we have plenty of space to do so. We have approximately five suites totaling nine hun- little over 944 square feet. They would also share some of the, such as some open spaces, such as a copy room, break room and restrooms. Additional agreement highlights, just as a point of reference, if they wanted to access other, other, other facilities, we would go through the regular process of pre-approval. We would actually give them one key per employee stationed at the center, not to exceed four keys. They would also be part of the agreement, be responsible for all necessary repairs to the leased area, including routine maintenance. The fixed fees include a fee per square foot and that includes utilities, janitorial and indirect costs. The monthly anticipated revenue is $1,719.17. Over a 12-month period, that'd be about $20,630. Over the two years of the agreement, which the agreement is slated for is $41,260. This would be reflected in the PCS department and provide relief to the general fund. You heard the earlier presentation about the budget, so we're doing our part. Again, this is, reiterates what I said, $1.61 per square foot at a little over 944 square feet. So that 161 per square foot at 944, which would give us a $1,520.09. The monthly fee again is $1,719.17. The recommendations that we adopt a resolution approving a two-year co-locator lease agreement between the City of Madera and Madera Unified School District for the occupation and use of facilities at the John Wells Youth Center. And authorize the mayor to execute the lease agreement. And I guess the end of my presentation, if I have any, any questions. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Drew. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item D3? Do we have any written or Zoom comments on item G3, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay. Let's close public comment and bring it back to my comment, to my colleagues for comments and their questions. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Mr. Abear, I just wanted to commend you in actually putting the lease together. I think you took it to heart when we said that we wanted to explore our options when it comes to our budget. And this has added revenues to our budget, obviously, at the Parks Department, but it helps us. So thank you. Appreciate you. And I'm glad that the, that the partnership was with Madera Unified. I'm glad that they're, they'll be spending time, not only the athletic director, but other staff at our, our youth center there. So that they can also explore other opportunities that may be in the future partnership with the City of Madera, especially within that area. So, thank you.
That's absolutely our goal is to kind of have a more cohesive conversation. And so we can, we have some future endeavors that we can, we're being closer proximity so we can actually do some other things. So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Well, thank you very much. And then I'll ask for, through, through the mayor before we do.
Do you have one clarification to add to the agreement about the term?
The, the term, the beginning of the, I think on your staff report, the, the start date is blank. And that's because we have to sign first. It will go to the Madera Unified Board, Board on the 22nd. Our assumption is that they'll approve it and that's, that would be the start date. And so then we'll fill that in at a later time. Thanks for the reminder. Thank you, Sean. That was a good catch. I'll let into any more discussion, then I'll enter saying a motion.
I so moved to approve D3 with consideration of start date once it's approved by Madera Unified School District.
Second that. Motion to approve item D3 by Councilwoman Gallegos, seconded by Councilmember Montez. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Joe. We will now move on to item E, Administrator Reports. Item E1 is a response to Madera County Grand Jury Final Report 2223-02. City of Madera fails to enforce the golf course contract requirements. Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item?
I sure do, Mayor. First of all, first of all, can we preface by saying that the grand jury often, it's somewhat of a thankless role in the community. My understanding is they're volunteers and I understand they spend a considerable amount of time researching and, and for that, they do, can deserve a great amount of, of, of credit. Because like I said, I think it is largely a thankless job. However, it helps keep people like myself and organizations, public agencies honest. And I think in the spirit of transparency and in the spirit of continuous improvement, I think it's important to always remember that while it does take time to respond to these, I think it's good. And, and how I said, it does keep public agencies honest. So with that being said, the grand jury report recently issued a report regarding the Madera Municipal Golf Course on June the 20th. Written responses must be prepared and submitted within a specified guidelines as provided by the California Penal Code. And specifically 99.03. So with that, there are findings and then there's recommendations that the city is obligated to provide responses to. Those responses are in draft form and they were provided to council. So response to finding, they are written a little bit awkwardly, I'll say. So one of the items is that the respondent should agree or disagree with the finding. And it's either the respondent disagrees wholly or partially with the finding. And at that point, that's why they're written, the syntax looks a bit awkward, but that's the appropriate way to provide responses regarding findings to the grand jury. And then also providing some justification or some reasoning or logic behind why the respondent, in this case being the city, is providing said response. And then the recommendations, the responding party, again, the city, shall state if it's going to be implemented. If it's yet to be implemented. And if it would be implemented in the future, including a timeframe from when said implementation would occur. The recommendation requires further analysis, which the respondent can provide proper kind of determination or proper, or can elaborate on that. And then, or the respondent can simply state that it's not going to be implemented because it's unwarranted or unreasonable. In his response, so with that, there are numerous findings and numerous recommendations and I'm going to walk council through every one of the, these. And so finding number one, that the grand jury finds that the golf course budget reports are misleading. The city gives city council and the public a false understanding of the actual net surplus in the city budget. These are verbatim, by the way. And so this is as presented, as presented in the grand jury report. So the response to the finding is that the finding from staff's position is, the finding is unclear. The city's adopted fiscal budget 2220, 2223 clearly identifies the city debt on the golf course. Specifically pages 182, 187 and 244 under the heading Golf Course Debt Service. It's clear that the city owes debt on the golf course. Moreover, the city does acknowledge potential confusion could be introduced on page 245 or says the city will transfer in $298,804 to service the debt. However, this common is practicing government accounting. But with that being said, greater explanation may be warranted. So i- it's, because some of it does have to do with government accounting practices. There's a transfer in or a transfer out. In this case, it's a transfer in, that transfer in coming directly from the general fund. The grand jury finds that the lease agreements in Exhibit A and Exhibit B are obsolete. Those two exhibits were initially part of the 2009 agreement between the city and Sierra Golf Management. That is commonly referred to as SGM or Sierra. Typically, the city does not delete exhibits from existing agreements. It's not illegal or it's not really a legality issue. It's simply a question, does the city wish to delete it? In this case, city staff recommended not deleting it and the principal reason was to keep the record as clear as possible. Acknowledging that it did, it did add pages. So it added pages to the agreement, but we acknowledge that, that those pages are indeed obsolete because they were overwritten in 2011 or 10. Then the exact date escapes me, but there's no, it's not a legal question, but there are obsolete pages. However, again, simply to maintain a clear record and for transparency purposes, city staff at that time decided to simply leave it. While they were obsolete a number of years ago, I know since my time, and since I've been here, I've intentionally recommended that we leave those pages since December 3rd, 2018, which was my start date. And we've had numerous amendments to it, but again, simply for transparency reasons. Finding three, the grand jury finds that record-keeping requirements of the lease are not being met. The city agrees partially with this finding. The city has records pertaining to capital projects and revenues, but lacks records pertaining to the United States Golf Association, which we'll talk a little bit later. The principal reason for that is Sierra Golf Management did not provide records as stipulated in the agreement since 2009. We've since rectified it, but we'll talk about that in a couple of slides. The grand jury finds that the appointed parks director coordinate with Sierra Golf Management for, for this course planning and oversight role. The city agrees with this finding. Our parks director, Joe Abear, who's sitting right in front of me, is responsible. And he's going to be, he's going to be extremely active in his role in that capacity. Grand jury report five, the city has failed to exercise reasonable oversight and enforcement over the golf course maintenance and capital improvements. The city disagrees partially with this finding, primarily because the finding provides insufficient information to either agree or disagree as the term reasonable oversight and enforcement is unclear. With that being said, not necessarily the finding, but some of the text within the report itself, in terms of the body of the report. It, it does allude to sand. And so there is a section, section 16 in the 2009 agreement that SGM should be responsible for providing sand. Whereas section 5.6 of the Sixth Amendment notes capital improvement shall include repair of drainage and renovation of 11 bunkers on the golf course, including materials, equipment and labor. Sand is materials. So the original agreement said, it said that SGM will provide sand. Then there was an amendment to the Sixth Agreement or to the Sixth Amendment that stipulates that materials, in this case being sand, is ineligible expense. So again, could that, is additional clarity in future agreements reasonable? That's a very reasonable request. So based on this finding, the city finds that the renovations for the drainage improvements were deemed an appropriate expense. Now, again, staff, myself specifically, took great liberty in trying to decipher exactly what was being referred to. I simply went to the, the, the body of the text to determine if that's what was being alluded to. But again, it's not very clear. Also, as was discussed in front of this council on a couple of occasions, is that the city did not mandate that a $15,000 connection be made to MID as required by Amendment Six. And that's true. City staff did not require it, even though the idea initially came from city staff. The principal reason for that is after the agreement was made, city staff, MID staff and golf course team met at the site and it was determined that the new connection would not, it would not provide additional water capacity. It was redundant water capacity. So at that time, it was agreed to. Let's hit the pause button. Let's, let's spend that money on, on improved water infrastructure. And that was reflected on the Ninth Amendment, which was approved by this council on June 21st of 2023, so about two months ago. Those $15,000 are going to be spent, but they were not spent as part of the Sixth Amendment. They're going to be spent as part of the Ninth Amendment. Finding six, the grand jury finds that the lease requirements that logos and name can Madera Municipal Golf Course must always be used for all signage, announcements, menus, events, websites, et cetera. The grand jury finds that the logos on our municipal have not been, have, have been often omitted from required usage. City staff agrees with that finding. It has been omitted and the city is addressing this item right now. So Joe has met with SGM and we've informed them that it's required to be used. The grand, finding seven, the grand jury finds that the golf course catering from the golf courses is offered on both Sierra and Sugar Pine websites. Catering from golf course is prohibited and is a breach of the lease. The city agrees with this finding. The original lease indicates that catering is not permitted. With that being said, on June 21st, 2023, the council adopted the Ninth Amendment, which removed the prohibition against off-site catering and added, should SPS vacate the clubhouse, the city and SGM will work together to procure new operator. City staff acknowledges that historically it was a violation, but that was corrected on June 21st. I should also add that council took action on June the 21st. The grand jury report came out the day prior on June the 20th. The city staff report, including the draft, the draft agreement was made public the Saturday before June 21st, which if I recall was the 17th off the top of my head. And just my luck, the calendar in front of us does not show June, but it was a couple of days prior to that. Finding number eight, the, the grand jury finds that the 2120, in 21 through 23, the city gave Sierra unnecessary financial concessions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city disagrees with this finding. The finding simply can neglect to recognize the uncertainty bar, kind of brought on by the pandemic on local businesses and economies. Going back several years, on April the 15th of 2020, staff noted that the city and SGM were close to finalizing its terms to a new agreement when the pandemic emerged, causing SGM to withdraw from the agreement due to unknown variables at that time. It, it's, sometimes it's difficult to go back a couple of years prior to the pandemic and recall the uncertainty that was being caused. And I'll put it bluntly, the havoc that the pandemic caused at the onset. The city's agreement with SGM was set, it was set to sunset on April the 30th, 2020, and the city was not able to assume responsibility. two thousand and twenty, and the city was not able to assume responsibility of operations and maintenance. The city, in theory, could have, however, it would have required a substantial reallocating of monies from other funds. Those funds would have most likely have come from the police or fire departments or the parks departments, which are, tend to be the general funds, or, or tend to have the largest fund, general fund allocations. So the city disagrees with inference that the reduction was inappropriate, as the finding provides no evidence, study, or data, or reasonable example of the term unnecessary financial concessions. Finding number eight, or I'm sorry, continued. So again, consistent with national state and county practices, the city declared a local emergency due to the imminent threat of COVID nineteen. And we continue by stating that the city further demonstrates was not in a position to assume responsibility, given the uncertainty of the pandemic. The purpose of the concession was an attempt to maintain the golf course in operating condition. If the city would have taken the golf course over, we, we, the city would have assumed responsibility for maintenance and operations. I'm not confident the city was in a position to do that. Finding number five or nine, the grand jury finds that the lease section four point four unnecessarily excludes the city from receiving any revenue from the described activities. The city disagrees with this finding. The observation that the city excluded itself from receiving any revenue from the described activities is accurate. However, the respondent disagrees with the underlying inference that this fee somehow, I'm sorry, that this fee practice is somehow inappropriate. Moreover, staff that was involved during the original two thousand and nine agreement have separated from the city, thus any direct response to counter, come with rationale would be speculative. Under the established structure, the city receives a base rent compensating for additional activities. Finding ten, the grand jury finds that there are no United States Golf Association reports as required by the lease. The city agrees with this finding. After research, SGM acknowledged that they have not contacted the Golf Association since agreement was initially ratified going back in two thousand and nine. Since then, they have visited the site on July the twenty-first. They provided a written report. This report was provided to council at our last council meeting on August the second, and that document is available for the public. So now in terms of recommendations, so we're going to pivot from findings to recommendations. So recommendation number one, the grand jury finds that the city finance director correct and clarify all budget entries by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And what this is referring to is last year's budget, city staff inadvertently omitted a sixty-four thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the golf course to pay the debt. And a part of that goes to the airport, because the golf course leases, if my memory serves me, fourteen acres from the airport, which is an enterprise fund. Staff did become aware of that, and again, it was just worth a sixty-four thousand dollars, and the city council on June the twenty-first of earlier this year made that appropriation and made the, kind of proper, can budget amendment. And so that has been rectified. Recommendation two, the grand jury recommends that the city immediately rewrite a new contract for the lease management and operation of the golf course. Again, this report came out on June the twentieth. On June the twenty-first, the following day, council approved a, a new contract with SGM. It was a five-year extension. And according to the Brown Act, the documents were published on June the seventeenth. So that's the Saturday that I was referring to, so I was correct on my date, days prior to the grand jury report. While the city acknowledges that a contract absent items, the grand jury considers obsolete may not be ideal, the contract is legally binding. And so again, some of this refers to, for example, exhibits A and B that were part of the two thousand and nine agreement. So again, cannot to say that anyone's wrong. I think moving forward, the goal should, should be to probably hit the reset bind and come up with a brand new clean agreement. In the spirit of, of, of time and partnership, we collectively felt the city and SGM felt that doing an amendment was appropriate. Recommendation three, the grand jury recommends detailed records of capital improvements and maintenance expenditures and the Golf Association advice reports be kept by the city for public viewing and for at least five years or as required by law. This recommendation has been partially implemented and will be ongoing. The city has an established policy relating to the retention of records and conformance to a state law, prides itself on being transparent in governance. The city adheres to Public Records Act request, and in terms of the Golf Association advice reports, the first one was made available August second of this year. However, staff does acknowledge that for thirteen years or fourteen years, the city did not receive those. Recommendation four, the grand jury recommends that the park director or other city representative immediately begin to monitor and exercise oversight over the golf course capital improvement and maintenance expenditures. Staff response, this recommendation has been implemented and will be ongoing. And the ninth amendment establishes a golf course committee, which council member Rodriguez sits on on behalf of the council. In addition, the ninth amendment requires that the city collect the capital funds and will reimburse Sierra Golf Management. This is counter to what was done historically, whereas Sierra Golf Management would provide a seat of improvement. In this case, the city would actually hold the money, and the city would reimburse Sierra Golf Management. So I think the onus is going to be on Sierra in working with the committee and ensuring that those capital improvements are appropriate. Recommendation five, the grand jury recommends that the city immediately specify the maintenance and capital improvement categories as defined by USGA to eliminate confusion as to what Sierra is paying for and or has paid for golf course capital improvements and said maintenance. This recommendation has been implemented. USGA visited the golf course on July the twenty-first of this year and prepared a list of recommendations. That list was shared with this council on August the second, and will be shared with the golf, with the golf course advisory committee at their upcoming meeting, which is August the twenty-first Monday. So the first meeting will be Monday. And actually, the next item on your agenda is regarding that committee. Recommendation six, the, the grand jury recommends that the city immediately enforce the lease provisions requiring the word municipal on all other name and logo requirements. This recommendation has been implemented and will be ongoing. It's going to be on the city to ensure that the golf course is complying with it, and I'm sure that Joe's been all over it. But that's going to be a work in progress. That's probably not going to happen overnight, but that's definitely going to take a little bit of time, because if there's print material, you don't necessarily want to throw away print material. I don't think that's very environmentally friendly, but for other items, a lot easier to deal. Recommendation seven, the grand jury recommends that the city, I'm sorry, that the city immediately review its position on catering. When making any decision, the city should determine its original purpose from prohibiting offsite food, service, and catering. City should enforce agreement or allow the use. Response seven, this recommendation has been implemented. The, the recently approved ninth amendment permits offsite catering. This item was reviewed during recent negotiations, and city staff cannot determine why said prohibition was originally included. A, a lot of the staff that was here in two thousand and nine has since separated, and we, city staff, could not find any reason why it was included. Recommendation eight, the grand jury recommends the city immediately negotiate for concessions made during COVID nineteen. The city should consider increasing its share of revenue by participating in all of Sierra's income excluded from the city in lease section four point four. This recommendation has been implemented. On June twenty-first of this year, the council approved the ninth amendment, which outlines how much Sierra pays the city to operate the golf course. As part of the ninth amendment, the amount that SGM remits to the city for base rent and per round of golf exceeds what it paid prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic. On recommendation nine, the grand jury recommends that a new lease be drafted immediately, deleting all obsolete terms, which unnecessarily exclude the city from city revenue. This recommendation has partially, has been partially implemented. The city does not have adequate information to ascertain what obsolete terms this is regarding. Again, city staff is, is assuming that per finding two, exhibits A and B. And then council has already approved the ninth amendment, which includes a five-year extension, so it's difficult to go back to the table and say, we want a new agreement when you just started a new agreement. Recommendation ten, the grand jury recommends that the city should immediately make the USGA mandatory annual reports available for public review. This recommendation has been implemented, and those were made to, available to the council and the public two weeks ago on August the second. So this evening, it is recommended that the council review the proposers' response to the grand jury and approve their responses as presented or provide direction of changes to the proposed response. So with that being said, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Now that I learned something about sand tonight. Are there any public comments regarding item E one? Anyone in the audience saying none? Alicia, do we have any public comment in written or Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
That being the case, we will now close public comment on item E one and bring it back to council for questions and a, and or a motion.
We'll do approve the recommendations or the responses to the grand jury report.
Motion to approve the responses from the staff to the grand jury report. Motion made by council member Montez, second by councilwoman Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is unanimous. Item E one is passed.
Thank you for all that hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Wasn't easy.
This one. We will now move on to item E two, direction regarding golf course advisory committee composition. Mr. Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Joe Abear again, golf course again. I'm, this is item E two, direction regarding golf course advisory committee composition. And for summary, June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, approval by council of the ninth amendment to the Madera Municipal Golf Course Operation Management Lease Agreement with SGM. The new term included forming a golf course advisory committee, which was a seven-member body. This, this seven members consisted of one council, council member, parks director, a representative from SGM, a service organization representative, a golfer at large community member, a food and beverage director, and non-golfer at large community member. Four members of the seven have already been confirmed. Tonight, I'm seeking direction from the council to fill the remaining three vacancies, which include the service organization, the non-golfer at large, and the golfer at large community member. Upon council's suggested approval during the June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting, the final committee appointments are to be mutually agreed to by city council and SGM Incorporated. The committee members that we have so far, you can see the four that we've already filled and the three vacancies that I've already alluded to. I'm seeking direction on several items. One is the service organization representative. Doing some research, we found that Evening Lions Club and the Morning Rotary Club meet at the golf course. There's also additional service clubs that meet regularly, but not regularly, so they, they are in and out. The non-golfer at large community member, the council is to recommend a member to ensure alignment with the intent of the representation. The golfer at large community member, I, I need a recommendation here. We've already had an unsolicited volunteer, Mr. Cheeto Romero has expressed interest. The other issue is the rotate, rotating committee members. We're requesting formal guidance on appointments to committee versus rotational committee members. This report is submitted to request direction from city council on the golf course members. So again, service organization representative, the non-golfer at large community member, golfer at large community member, and then rotating committee members. And that is my, my, into my report.
Thank you very much, Joe. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on the golf course committee?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now close, since there are no Zoom or written comments regarding this item, we will now close this and bring it back to council for discussion and our motion. Mayor Protem Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. I was very happy to read Mr. Cheeto Romero's interest in being a part of this committee, especially given the, the area where he's a constituent of that has traditionally, traditionally not been as much as part of the decision-making. So I would be in support of Mr. Cheeto Romero, and I would also like for the council to consider Mr. Edward McIntyre, who has expressed interest in being a part of this. He's a very engaged community member, and I think that he would be an asset to this
With the motion, or is it just?
Yeah.
Council, councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Aber, thank you so much for looking to include service clubs, because I am with Madera Evening Lions, but being on council, I don't make their meetings. But being there every week or every other week with Rotary, Rotary and Lions, we do see a lot that's happening at the golf course with the catering, with the building, with the facilities, and with staff. So by having somebody from those service clubs sit on this advisory board is so recommended in my part, and I would hope this council would agree with that. That's all, Mayor.
Joe, could you put that slide up of the, the ones that are, we are lacking? If you could put that back up. There you go. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to confirm on that second that the appointment of Mr. Cheeto Romero would be for the golfer at large, and the other appointment of Edward McIntyre would be for the non-golfer at large. Is that correct? Mayor Protem, was that your?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Perfect. I also wanted to just ask, and I'm sorry, maybe the rotating committee members, you're saying this is specific to, obviously, the terms of office, and how does that play in like every, I mean, obviously, with, with our term, right? Then we'd have to have someone appoint, but with the service club, we're saying that every year they would alternate?
Yeah, and that was, that was the thought. I, I guess the, the people who are already there will probably rotate with, with your term, but the service clubs, because there's more than one, we didn't think it was fair or equitable to have them stay on the, the committee for a four-year term or two, you know? And actually, we were really recommending that we do this annually, maybe rotate from one club to the other.
Who was first? Roxas?
Yeah, and now the, as far as the, and I'm sure it's probably spelled in our, in our advisory committee, but how often did we want to consider these meetings? And I mean, I know the recommendations probably suggested we meet monthly, I don't know.
Monthly is the plan right now.
Okay. I think that's, that's fair. I, I would second Mayor Protem's motion.
And as outlined for the social service organization, where it's the one, because that was the only thing that you didn't mention, it was the one year on, one year off, right?
Rotating.
And then somebody else coming.
Okay. Rotating. Councilwoman Gallegos.
So with that, I would like to also attach with Mayor Protem's motion, if she's okay, to have Carla Grant, who's a Madera Evening Lion, sit on that service organization representative.
So you're making a decision.
So there was a amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Did they appoint, does the service organization appoint, or we're looking at us appoint?
I, I believe the, the agreement is that council and SGM would do the appointment, so you guys didn't give me the unilateral authority to do it, I recall, I was sitting right there, but yeah.
And what about the other organization? Is there a name for the other, other person?
Well, it would be the next year, so they would rotate.
Yeah, we'll rotate for the next year.
First, and then next year, we would appoint somebody else.
Right.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, you know, part of the grand jury's report was that there wasn't an advisory committee really. Having folks accountable for a lot of the, the capital improvements or part of the agreement that was there. So I think it really serves a purpose for us to take this committee and really implement the, the policies and or the agreements that we have set before us. You know, the fact that the USGA was able to provide us a report hadn't been done since two thousand and nine, really kind of speaks out to how an advisory committee is much needed to be able to be the watchdogs and, and making sure that we, we followed through the agreements. And, you know, based on that report, it really laid out what are the capital improvements for the course itself. It didn't really specify what other improvements for the facilities, but they were more into, look, look, your, your irrigation system is probably your priority right now. If you don't have this irrigation system taken care of, then you can't move on to the other items that you need, right? Your, your green. Your, your greens and what have you, sand bunkers. I, I mean, that, that comes with it, but without water, really, you don't have a course to play in, you don't have numbers, we don't have rounds, and that equals revenue. So I think it's important that this advisory committee really holds the city and SGM accountable for all the agreements set on the, all the elements put on the agreement. So with that, I want to amend my motion also to reflect the, the amendment that council member Gallegos had mentioned.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear as.
I was going to ask for a re-reading of the motion.
So my understanding was the Mayor Protem made an original motion for Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Romero. And there was an amendment to that motion by Councilmember Gallegos to add on the rotating position that would start with the Lions Club and that would be Carla Grant at the Lions Club. So I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rodriguez, the first question is, is whether or not Mayor Protem agrees to that amendment. If she does, then that's the first and that's the second.
Perfect.
If she doesn't, then a new motion can be made and we can.
Okay, as I'm glad you're here. I'm so glad you're.
I do agree.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Right.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Somebody point of clarification to really muddy the waters. On, on the two golfers or I'm sorry, the two at-large committee members, one of them being a golfer, one of them being a non-golfer, would those be on a rotational basis? And the reason I ask is historically appointments by council members are for the term of the council member, but in this case, it's not an individual council member unless that's the desire of council. The alternative is to have them on there until they elect to no longer serve on the committee. Or another option is to put some kind of time clauses, for example, a rotational. And I think it would be appropriate to specify that now at the formation of the committee versus and later on where it could become a little awkward for, for council and the community.
Would, would a two-year be appropriate, maybe?
I think that would be appropriate.
Only because, you know, I think it, it gives them a feel of, you know, what, what's expected as far as capital improvements. And at least to see that those capital improvements are implemented, you give them enough time to at least see, see through those projects.
Correct, and I would agree. I think it would be, so the two-year would apply to the golfer-at-large, to the non-golfer-at-large, and then the service organization representative would rotate between the two service organizations. However, if I may simply make a suggestion that there would be a clause added that if future service organizations begin to meet at the golf course, that they be included in the mix. For example, if the Kiwanis decide to meet there on a monthly basis or weekly, that they too be given an opportunity to sit on the committee.
I think that's fair.
That's another amendment, correct?
Right, so just to be clear, I think the Mayor Protem has said, yes, she's willing to do that. We're going, just so I'm clear, we're going to be, for the service organization, there's going to be a rotational basis. It's going to start with the Lions Club. It's going to start with Ms. Grant. It will then start to rotate. If a new club comes in, they will be thrown into the rotational mix. As for the non-golfer and service organization representative, those terms will be for two years, and that will be for Mr. Romero and Mr. McIntyre. I'm sorry. Yeah. Did I miss it? I thought it was Mr.
Said the service organization. And the non-golfer-at-large, correct?
Yes, thank you. Is that your amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Second.
Alrighty, we're there.
We got it done. All those, then we'll bring it back to council for a motion. It's been made and seconded by Mayor Protem Mejia, seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos to approve item E two with the amendments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion passes. Alrighty.
A little complicated there, huh? So we got it done, huh?
We will now move on to item F, council member reports announcements, future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and or other public agencies and at public events to request updates to initiate future agenda items, to take action on matters initiated under the section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I can't articulate very well today, I have no report.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Well, guess what? I can articulate.
No, really, no.
Rodriguez, my three minutes.
Appreciate you yielding that time to me, Councilmember Gallegos. Well, earlier I, I talked about maybe a proposal, and this is for my colleagues. I'll ask staff to see if we get direction today, but back in two thousand sixteen, when I got elected, the Proposition sixty-four was also passed, and if you all know, that was cannabis. And one of the questions that I brought up here during our budget review was, hey, how do we, how do we find additional sources of revenue, right? And obviously cannabis was making its way through a lot of these municipalities. They were already collecting certain taxes, or they implemented their policies and ordinances to match that of the state so they can take advantage of that. Well, it's been now close to seven years. I'm on my second term, and I'm glad to see that we finally have gotten, we've gotten this far, and we've been able to award at least two social equity licenses. We're yet to see how that funding goes. But one of my proposals is that we look at how we, how we utilize those funds now. We don't have those funds today, right? So I can't really request that we do, but I know that we can certainly do something with percentages. So here's my proposal to this council, and hopefully they look at that. One of the biggest things that I've heard over the budget is that costs are increasing, inflation is here. And one of our biggest revenue generators are sales tax. So how do we get more sales tax money in here? Obviously, we have to create better jobs, bring up our median income, and how do we do that? Well, we have to, as a city, I think we're also a business, and we have to go after and market ourselves, recruit. We hire a lot of folks here in Madera. We hire good people to work for the city of Madera. What we can't do is retain them to stay here. So we have to incentivize them to stay here because if they stay here, then that property tax base stays here. Their disposable income stays here, and we have to think like a business. Although we want to hire a lot of folks, which is a great agency to, of employment, we have to also think about how we retain those employees here. And you're not going to do it just by saying, well, Madera is a great place to live. You have to dangle a carrot. You have to incentivize them. So my proposal is if there's any funds that we can allocate, I would say in this case twenty-five percent that we utilize that to provide a down payment assistance, a deferred loan, so to speak, to be able to help folks.
Excuse me, council member, could I just ask a question, Shannon? Is, is this a proposal?
This is.
This to bring a, 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 a genize? How do we spend the revenues as opposed to stating at this time how we're going to spend revenue?
We're not, I'm not asking that you deliberate or discuss on that. I'm asking to see if this is something you would agree to bring back for future agenda items. And this is, it's, it's important for me to explain this because it's, it's how it's done that we find a way to be able to utilize those funds to be able to attract folks to come here. That's my biggest thing. My biggest ask is that we find a way to retain folks to stay in the city of Madera by incentivizing them. You can't mandate that they stay, but if you incentivize them, act like a business, provide incentives, people will want to stay. And that was just a, 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 a suggestion. Again, that's yet for this council to agree whether or not I want to bring that back. That's just a proposal. Second, we have a lot that's emptied out at the Yosemite and E Street. I would ask this council, consider how maybe staff maybe would have set out a proposal, an RFP, to see if some private business would want to create something that aligns with our current downtown project that we have underway, something that coincides with it, that brings additional revenue. So if we can have builders wanting to bid, maybe erase the top to find out if our, our, that lot can serve a purpose to generate more revenue, but at the same time aligns with the downtown mission, aligns with our current project that's going underway. That would be another proposal and suggested future gen item that I would request at this council, hopefully bring back and see if that may be something we can do. That lot's been sitting there. It's public land, and I know there's been mandates for the state to utilize it in some way, but why not use it in a way that we can attract more money to this, to this community or attract more money to our downtown? This is a big project that we're investing a lot of dollars, and I, I think that if we put an RFP, I'm sure there's a business out there. And again, we have to incentivize, set aside some money, put some money aside and see if we can put something together to have a business, bring up a plan and see what they can best do with that lot they can, again, align to, to our current mission and core values that we have. That being said, Mr. Mayor, those are my proposals. Again, they're suggested future agenda items. I don't know if the council would agree to bring something back for discussion and maybe take a vote on that later.
Can, 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 can you give us an idea where we're at with that?
I'm asking for direction. That's all it is, for future.
Direction.
But in a general sense is what I'm saying, that right now we can't specify a specific need. We can say we can bring an item back to discussion of how we're going to generate revenues or what we're going to use.
I wanted to articulate how I would like to see that. And again, it's a recommendation for this council. If they want to bring it back, I'll let staff can bring that back in some proposal. Whether you like it or not, then we'll make a decision there. This is not making a decision today on how we're going to spend that money. It's just a suggested agenda item for discussion. And I articulated how I would like to see that. That's all it was.
Would, would, with all due respect, I, I just want to make sure. Would, are you open to having other discussions and other proposals?
During that discussion, you can open that up.
Okay, that's, okay, then, yes, then that, as long as we understand each other that it's a general discussion and not just one specific. And yes, I, I would agree with that. We need to bring back this item.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to Councilmember Montes.
Oh, me. Nothing to report.
And so Mayor Protem Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say or commend Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria for all the work that she has done in advocating for Madera since day one, putting Madera front and center. And then also just thank you for the more than seven hundred backpacks given away to our children in our community. I know that there, she, it, it was one backpack and there, I mean, one backpack giveaway. There were several. So very happy to see that, as you had mentioned during the last meeting. But just thank you, Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria. Tomorrow, there's going to be a candlelight vigil that's being organized by the community. It's the Save Our Hospital, and it's going to take place at the former hospital site, twelve seventy East Almond Avenue. It begins at five fifteen. They're trying to have cell phones or just battery-operated candles because of the risk of fire. Anybody that would like to go out and just show your support for trying to get this hospital reopened are welcome. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Villegas.
Oh, not to turn a board.
Alrighty, thank you very much. As Mayor Protem mentioned, we were at the Madera Courthouse Park for Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria's backpack giveaway, gave away backpacks, school materials. She had me at free tacos, carne asada and, and pollo. There was ice cream, paletas given out too, and there was a ton of resource materials from Madera County, the City of Madera, Parks and Rec, providing resources to our community about what, what, what is available in our community. The other event I attended was the Lifetime Achievement Awards for, put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Commerce, it was at the Madera Fairgrounds. It was very well attended. It was a packed house, recognizing people in our community who have made a difference in our community, and that was a pretty good event. Of course, we had the swearing-in ceremony for our, our, our police officers and civilian staff, including dispatchers and animal control, which was a really good event, showing that our, 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 our staff in, in first responders is growing, and they reflect the community. It was, that was very important. We had today the Fresno-Madera Police Chiefs Award Ceremony today, which was very well attended. The, the chiefs and the, and the deputy sheriffs departments in, in our, in our Fresno-Madera counties gave awards to people who have made a difference in our community. There was a widespread thing of people who were given awards. Some of them actually saved lives. Some of them prevented crimes, hate crimes to be committed against our C community. Others saved toddlers from running away from home, going out the front door and then getting them and bringing them back to their loved ones. Others were saving pets. There was a whole gamut. There was a, a group of individuals were helping during the snow. People were snowed in up in our hills, up in the Madera County hills, taking trees off of the fallen, that had fallen over the people's homes. These were all volunteers. They fed the community. They helped our community in a time of need. And I think it's a wonderful idea for the Fresno and Madera County sheriffs and police departments to be able to award folks who are making a difference in our community and stepping up to help our community. So that was, that was today, our own very, our, our very own Zach Zachariah from the Madera Kiwanis receives an award also today for his philanthropic and community services too. So I want to, Commander Chiamonte, you were part of that today, and that was a really, really good ceremony today. That was, so I commend you and everyone else involved in that for putting that on. Councilmember, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, America Garcia. And I'm sorry, I was caught up with the proposal that I forgot to mention that last week I had the privilege to attend as an alternate, the Cal Vans Directors Meeting in Sacramento, where there were legislate, lobbying legislatures for additional funding. But what Cal Vans is, so that, you know, I bring back is that it's, it's really a, a pool of vans, over seven hundred and two vans that they utilize throughout the Central Valley to provide, the majority of people are farm workers. So they provide these vans, labor contractors, and I didn't know this, right? I mean, this is something that I, that I've learned, but it's really good because we don't, we don't utilize it as much in Madera as other counties do. But if we know of any folks looking to utilize a pool, these vans are ten to fifteen passenger vans that can really help our farm-working community. One, to stay safe. Two, to reduce the emissions, and they're provided and they're self-sufficient, and they're paid for by either state funding and or the employer. So they don't really take a lot of the money from the state's budget, so it's really done on a self-sufficient mode. I think it's important for us as local electeds to, to let our folks know, especially within the farm-working community, that there's addition, that there's additional sources that they can utilize. Again, reduces emissions. It can carry up to fifteen folks to work, and it reduces safety also. One of, I mean, it provides a lot more safety. So just something, if you guys have any questions on, please let me know. I'd be more than happy to pass on to the director that can help facilitate maybe a van for, for any type of pool. That being said, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That concludes our council member reports and announcements. We do not have anything under item G, which is our closed session. We will now move on to the adjournment. This movie, this meeting is now adjourned at nine twenty-five. I want to thank everyone for being with us tonight, and our next meeting dates are Wednesday, September sixth, and Wednesday, October the fourth. Thank you very much, and everyone have a good evening.
Mayor, if I may, we have a special meeting next Thursday, August twenty-fourth. Okay. Sorry, wasn't on the agenda when it was posted.
It's okay.
Thank you.
We'll add that too. Thank you very much.